Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on December 1st, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7th, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice that this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the ongoing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after each applicant's witness has testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. Ask with respect that members of the public would express your views in three minutes less. We will have a countdown clocked to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not for the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Tex Zarni? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Boddeheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a corner.
Thanks. I know Mr. Tex Zarni is not able to be with us tonight, but I expect that Councilwoman Sacks will join us momentarily. I hope so. So announcements. Mr. Lesko, you want to talk a little bit about the master plan and yesterday's? Let the record show that Councilwoman Sacks is in the meeting now. Justin, you want to talk about the open house and the master plan?
Yes, I'm very happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Planning Board, members of the public. We had our master plan open house last night, the first one. It was very well attended. Was very happy with the outcome of the event. Right now, on the heels of that open house and the community visioning survey that preceded it, and with the holidays coming up, we're kind of handing off the process right now to the, our consultants to digest. So there won't be a steering committee meeting this month. There will be, the next one will be, I believe, January 25th, back to the Fourth Wednesday of the month. And by then, we should have some preliminary results from the surveys that we've given out thus far, and the open house, and all the documents that the consultants have looked at. And then we'll pick up again in the late winter, early spring with another open house, or another survey, then an open house. And then we'll get closer and closer to having that final document to be adopted at the Planning Board.
Yes, after a series of hearings, as I understand it.
Yep.
Yes, and the, the support team to the steering committee, which is Tim Quinn, Christine Symington, Alvin McGowan, and myself, and Justin are going to meet up early next week to do a debrief from yesterday's open house and to talk about what materials we want for the consultant to be able to distribute to the steering committee sometime before the end of the year. Hopefully. Don't want to prejudge that too much. So, anything else, Justin?
Nope, that's all I got. Thank you.
I want to announce, or congratulate really Mia Sacks on her being awarded the Distinguished Civic Leadership Award from the New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association, which is a pretty cool thing, and I think their award ceremony is two weeks from tonight. Tickets are available online, and congratulations, Mia. That's
Thank you.
Wonderful thing.
Thanks so much.
Are there other announcements from members of the board or from staff? Okay. The next two, oh, sorry, I'm skipping up. The next, next up is the Subcommittee Report, the report and recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee on Design Review. Mr. Quinn, do you want to take the lead on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I invite any of the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee to chime in at any point. I trust that everyone on the board received the report that was distributed last week, and there were recommendations that I will summarize for the benefit of the public. The, the committee decided that the board should submit to Princeton Council for consideration and ordinance establishing a Development Review Committee. But we'd like, it was the committee's belief that the board attorney should write the disordinance and submitted to council to revive a practice that has happened in the past in terms of the process for ordinances being introduced and adopted by council. The DRC should be composed of three members of the Planning Board, as appointed by the Chair, and one member of the zoning board of adjustment, as appointed by the Chair. I think that there was consensus on all of these points, that the DRC should meet early in the application process, ideally within seven to 10 business days of an application being deemed complete. The DRC should review all technical and design aspects of an application, appropriate under the MLUL, and make a report to the full board sharing any areas for follow-up discussion. DRC meetings should be led by the planning director or designate, or designate, and be supplemented with professional staff and consultants as deemed necessary and appropriate by the Planning Board, by the Planning Office, I'm sorry. Meeting should be held via Zoom and open to the public at a date and time to be determined by the Planning Office. Meeting should not include public comment, because we feel that public comment is better suited for sworn testimony at hearings before the full board. Based on our discussions, the committee made the following recommendation, that the Site Plan Committee, which was established or reintroduced by the board in 2022, should continue its work in determining whether applications will be considered major or minor site plans, and how they will proceed for consideration by the full board. And we touched again, we bumped up against this several times in all of our discussions, and I would invite members of the public to read the full report, including the addenda. But we, it was the belief of the Ad-Hoc Committee that the Planning Board should lead an effort to develop comprehensive design standards for parts of the built environment that are not covered in the neighborhood character and zoning ordinances adopted in 2018. We feel this effort should be prioritized following the adoption of the Princeton Community Master Plan. It's another heavy lift project for this. So with that, I would invite any members of the committee to share anything that I might have missed, or will take questions from members of the board.
I know.
Councilman Cohen.
Let me just first say before David, although maybe I could say this at the end as well, but I just want to thank the four of you on this Subcommittee for doing a ton of work. This was not a, this was a labor-intensive undertaking, and your, you know, the, the minutes as well as other addenda to the report, which itself is brief and concise, really do show what was put into it. So thank you very, very much for devoting the time and energy that it took to, to reach your conclusions. So.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. We had hoped that we would be able to bring this before the board sooner, but life happened to a lot of members of the, of the committee, myself included, and we're a volunteer committee on a volunteer board, so. Plus, there were several points where we felt that a comprehensive report was better than releasing things piecemeal, although we did release our minutes to members of the full board on a regular basis.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, thanks. I'm generally happy with the report. I have just a couple of, well, one question, which I think is, is pretty important. I know that the comments, all the comments that I heard during the input process emphasize the importance of an early review by this committee. And I'm concerned that doing the review after an application has been deemed complete essentially undercuts the purpose of having an early review, which was to get comments to the developer before things and I'm wondering if there's a reason why the review couldn't happen seven to 10 days after receipt of the application rather than having the application deemed complete. And I don't know if the legal thing, Jerry, but if, if there's no legal impediment, I think that would be a stronger recommendation.
Yeah, there is no, there is no legal impediment.
Okay.
What we'd want to do is if the, the board wanted to go that way, is make sure that there was enough time after the submission of the application that everything, everything was there, enough was there that it made sense, having the Design Review Committee review it at that point, even if, even if it wasn't technically complete.
Right. Okay. And then the other.
I think, David, if, if I, I'm trying to go back in, in time, I, I think that we were addressing Planning Office concerns about the, the status of completeness, and I'd welcome Mr. Lesko in if I'm, I could be misremembering. I think that your point about early and transparent were, were really guiding principles of, of the committee, but I, I think that there was a, there was some input from the planning staff at the time about something being deemed complete, but the point is well taken, and we can go back and look at that again if you'd like before Jerry writes the order.
I, I would urge that. And then the, the second thing, which I would consider a friendly amendment, I guess, is for the composition of the committee, to just say that preferably the members of the committee should be design professionals to the extent that they're present on the Planning Board and the zoning board of adjustment, you know. The big value, I, I think, of having this committee is to get some real expertise brought to bear on the applications, and so I think that to the extent that there are design professionals who can be tapped for that purpose, it would be a good way to go.
Thank you for that. Justin, do you have any, any thoughts about the first point that, that David brought up, which I, which also reflects what I, I heard in listening to the public comments that I didn't, you know, go over all the written ones or anything like that, but I was there for the public meeting where they heard comments.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have any, any comments at this time. I think it's something we could consider, and, you know, I'll get back with staff and see what we feel, you know, makes the most sense, but ultimately it's your decision.
Yeah, I think unless there's a compelling reason, I, I think it's a good idea to not require that it be deemed complete. I think that early review is really helpful before things are just fully baked, and they've but it, it does, it does, I guess it would need to be specific what the, we would need to be specific, or the Planning Office would need to be specific about everything that, that they definitely would need in order to review it. I mean, because, you know, a blob plan or line drawings.
Well, applications really shouldn't be submitted at that low level of detail. I mean,
Yeah.
Most applications have a full engineering package, you know, when they're submitted, the completeness has to do with, you know, minor checklist items or, you know, deficiencies of those drawings, but.
So it could be a distinction without much of a difference, but I, but I think that it is a good idea if, if it's feasible.
Yeah. The point is, an applicant is expecting to make revisions. When they submit initially, they're not expecting to make revisions after they've been deemed complete. I mean, they will if the board itself, you know, tells them they have to, but they want to be done when they're deemed complete.
Do any other members of the Ad-Hoc Committee have thoughts about this, one way or the other?
I, I fully support what David is saying. I feel like if we don't need to have it deemed complete, there's more opportunity to maybe be helpful. So yeah, I, I'm 100% with, with David on that.
Good.
Did we have a discussion about even sending the applicant to the committee before the application was filed, and before things started to be baked? I, I don't recall if we did. I think we might. Was there any discussion of that, Tim?
Yeah, I, I think that overall, the committee felt that concept plan was the best way to go. And I wish that I had the availability to go through the minutes right now to see where this piece of timing came from, but it was a specific recommendation that was informed by our discussion, and I, I would, I, as soon as we get off, I will go back and, and take a look at that, because I, I think that I don't know whether it, I thought it came from you, Jerry. And, or the, or the planning, or the, or the Planning Office that, at least, but I can't, honestly can't recall at this point. If someone wants to go through the document and do a search for it really quick.
I think there was a lot of conversation about possibly doing it prior to application, but I think it's legally impossible to require it.
Okay.
Before application, but it can, it can apply to all applications once the application is received.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for earlier, the earlier the better. I'm with Julie, and I, I think that the wording and the recommendations wound up being there for a reason, and honestly, I'm, I'm just drawing a blank right now as to what that was, so. But the, you know, the point is well taken. I think the better the earlier, and the earlier the better, sorry, and I think that we, we struggled with putting in language encouraging concept reviews, and in the end decided not to include such language. I mean, we're having a concept review tonight, and I think as a board, well, I, as a member of the board, I prefer a concept review before something's fully baked. So, and the second point was about expertise. Do you have thoughts on that, Justin? I'm really, I think it's a, I think in the end, it's a, it's up to the Chair to leverage the collective expertise of both boards in deciding who should be on, on that. I, I don't know whether there are any legal constraints that, you know, in writing an ordinance that prescribes a certain skill set to be on the review committee.
I didn't think there are legal constraints, and I understood what David was saying. That was just preferable if there were personnel available and wanted to do it.
Okay. Yeah, again, I, you know, we have two, two design professionals on our board and.
Really three, because.
Is a, is a. Yeah, that's true. So three. You know, to the extent that we would.
And Nat, Nat is also a planner. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I wasn't gonna say it. No, that's, yeah, the, those are, those are points very well taken, and yeah.
I think language would be appropriate for the ordinance.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to Tim or Justin or other members of the committee? Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, first of all, I must say, this is an outstanding job. I thoroughly enjoyed, it was a detailed read. Jerry would appreciate it. It was a very lawyer-like read in some respects. Extremely well done. The minutes were helpful in putting in context the language of what we were reading, but what I enjoyed in many ways, most of all, was the review of neighboring townships and the context it provided about the different ways that the problems we're addressing in this process can be handled. My first of maybe three comments has to do with the language and the understanding of all concern of design and, and technical review. I like Tim's language in various places. Tim, you said, for example, what we need, quote, is a group that can complement and supplement the work of the professional staff while providing design or technical insight into the development application. In the concluding minutes, you talked about a technical review group, and then the recommendation deals with needing a more comprehensive set of standards, and Jim Purcell, in his comments, made that point very, very dramatically in the context of early on, what do we need? I'm not sure that all concerned, certainly in my case, understand what we mean in the language. I, I understand, I'm there, I'm in the room. But I think it's very important, the way we draft the ordinance, because it will set the tone for anyone who reads closely, as I do, and takes the words literally as the interpretation of the role is to be played. And if that's done, then I agree totally with David Cohen and Julia's perspective. We need a level of expertise built into the process that can in fact provide whatever the definition of design and technical is, and it's clearly important, and it's clearly professional, and it clearly needs to happen early on. So that's my first point with respect to language. In addition, I noted, Jerry, your reference to putting Planning Board members on such a committee, that it wasn't a good idea. And then when I read the legal review, I wondered if there is anything about what we've recommended, while it does not give legal decision-making authority, with a strong committee and a strong recommendation, is there anything in your mind that could cause us legal problems as we, as we go down the road with decisions that have a very comprehensive preliminary, early-stage recommendation to the board? Then my third question, and I'm done. I appreciate the nature of a site plan review process. I wonder, given the nature of this committee, would there be any benefit to cost and efficiency, the marketing of our process, if we were to include site planning functions within a Development Review Committee, rather than having two separate distinct processes? That's, those are my comments for what they're worth.
Just in terms of having board members as members of the committee, and the more I thought about it, I thought that was okay. There's always the issue, somebody could say, well, you know, Mr. Cohen was a member, assumedly with the committee, you know, has, has more knowledge of this than people who don't, who are not members of the committee. But I, but I think the bottom line is still, board members know that, that they cannot consider anything which is not part of a public hearing where people, it's one under, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think it's.
Yeah, and I, I mean, Ms. Capizoli sees things as part of historic preservation permission, come to us. Mr. Tex Zarni sees things as a member of the PEC before they come to the board, so there's.
And the Site Plan Committee, too.
Yes, yes.
And I, I would only add to that, that all of our committee member meetings are open to all members of the board. And I imagine that as members of the public, if we wanted to attend meetings of this new board, that we would be able to as well as interested members. So, and apologies to Mr. Boddingheimer for not getting his credentials in there. And I, I would, in terms of the definitions, I, that's part of what I found interesting about the, the neighboring ordinances that we reviewed and other town ordinances.
So did I.
I would imagine that those would be sort of baked into the ordinance by, by council writing them, writing the ordinance. They were very helpful, as was the court case that was cited, the Stone Harbor case.
Right. And to your point, Jack, about the technical expertise, there's a ton of it coming to the table in the persons of the, of the staff, Mr. Lesko, Mr., I, I don't know who all the staff, whether Mr. Dobremilsky would be part of it. I, I assume obviously the engineering department, whether it's Mr. Weisman or Jim Purcell or both. So there's a lot of technical expertise in the room, along with members of the board who may bring different kinds of, you know, design expertise or planning expertise. Good, thank you. Those were great comments and questions. Any other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Cohen?
I, I just want to remind, Jack had a third question, which had to do with the Site Plan
Yeah.
Review Committee and
Oh, yeah.
Design Review Committee and whether there's overlap there. I don't want to prejudge the answer, but I, he didn't get an answer, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank, thank you, David.
Yes. You're doing my job for me. Thank heaven, somebody can pick up the slack. I think they're different. I'm sorry, yeah, please, Justin.
Well, the municipal land use law is pretty clear about the minor site plan classification. Who can do it? You know, either the full board or Subcommittee of the Board. So there could maybe theoretically be a way, but it would be different than what's recommended tonight.
Yeah, I think it would be wise. Yeah, I think it would be wise to keep those two, two separate. Um, Mr. O'Donnell?
And I was just going to point out that if we, uh, do this, uh, design review before the application is deemed complete, if we change that wording, then we can't make that major minor designation at that time. Yeah, officially anyway.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I would, I would really kind of defer to planning in, in this to a large extent. Um, as, as someone who's been on the, on the site plan committee, I think that committee's worked really well. Um, in, as it's set up, but, uh, Mr. Taylor's point about efficiency and use of staff time is well taken. And, but Mr. O'Donnell's correct that making a designation before something is deemed complete, I think is not possible.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Other, uh, other comments from board members were staff? Okay. Well, thank you again, ad hoc committee.
So as far as next steps go, I, I, I assume that are we taking a vote to accept the recommendations and then, um, you know, passing them on to Jerry to, for purposes of writing an ordinance or what are I, after having been so purposeful and, um, taking as much time as we did, I, I don't want to see it just sort of, um, after finally getting, crossing the finish line from our perspective, I don't want to see it sort of hang out there. I, I think if we. We could accept the recommendations with Mr. Cohen's, um, two suggestions. And, you know, and refer it to to Jerry and to the planning office to work on the ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does.
I support, I support. I would move that resolution of the board.
Second?
Excellent. Moved by Mr. Cohen and seconded by Mr. Taylor that the board accepts the recommend, the report and recommendations um, from the ad hoc committee on design review. Uh, taking into account the, the comments and suggestions made by Mr. Cohen, accepting the comments and suggestions made by Mr. Cohen. I think we can do an all-in-favor vote, or, or would people prefer a, a roll call? Any preference? I don't see a preference, so all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Or for some reason abstaining? Okay.
Thank the members of the committee. They were great and indefatigable in coming up with these recommendations.
Thank you, Tim.
Great work.
I take it as part of that, I'm tasked with doing the ordinance.
Yes.
Yes, you are, Mr. Muller.
Correct.
Continue with the planning stuff, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of interactions with Justin.
Yes, please.
Yeah, good, thank you. Dig down for my copy of the agenda. The next two items on the agenda, the minutes um, from June 2nd and the resolution or finding effect for uh, the Mount Lucas project, both of 701 Mount Lucas Road, that is. Uh, both of those are postponed. Uh, we'll take them up next week. Uh, well, in the case of the resolution, I'm not positive the minutes will be ready, but we will meet, uh, next week, so we'll we will consider the resolution, um, at that time.
There, there's a second resolution that's done in draft, and I, I hope to get it to, um, to carry earl- early in the week, so the board has plenty of time to look at it. And that's for the Hobson signage, uh, material.
Okay, good.
That application that took about fifteen minutes.
Good.
Presidential college signage.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, got it. Thank you. Uh, so next up, we have a concept plan. Um, this is submitted by Jimmy and Marlin Ayodele. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, and if I'm not, please, um, correct me. This is a, a concept review of a minor subdivision at four, six, nine Ewing Street, block seven, two, zero, two, one, eighteen. This is file number P twenty-two, twenty-two dash two fifty-five C.
Mr. Chow has.
Yeah, I'm recusing myself, since I know the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, good, so Mr. Chow has moved over to the attendees. Is that correct? Has that happened already? I guess it has. Uh, let's see, Mr. Justin, did you have something? Okay, sorry to stammer here. Mr. Dobremilsky, um, I guess it would be good for you to set the table for us. And if there are any other professionals in addition to you, Dan, um, that will want to weigh in, it would be good for Jerry to swear everybody in at once.
Well, this is for concept, we usually don't swear people in, but we can.
Oh, any, anybody at all? Okay.
If, if the board would prefer, we can certainly swear people in.
Uh, sure. I, I, I mean, I think it's a good, good idea when, yeah, yes, please.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name for the record.
Dan Dobremilsky.
And you just swore, yeah, Mr. Bridger in as well.
Yeah. Uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
And state your full name for the record, Derek.
Derek Bridger.
Thank you.
And Mr. Weisman as well, I think.
Yeah, I think, uh, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Also, I'm for him, please state your full name for the record.
Daniel Weisman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Dobremilsky.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. There we go. So this is a Google Maps view of this area of the community. As you can see, the property in question, four, six, nine Ewing Street, is highlighted in the middle. Uh, the property is on Ewing Street, uh, with behind the block back, uh, North Harrison. Uh, the, as you can see here, Princeton Healthcare Center Office Building there, McCaffrey's Food Market and it's to the lower right of the view in, in the residential neighborhood to the left. So that kind of gives you a feel for where the property is that we are, um, considering. So this isn't, uh, this, my report is dated September thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna go through that report now. Now, this application requests conceptual review of a contemplated minor subdivision for an existing nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six square foot lot. Currently improved with a three thousand square foot residential dwelling, which I believe includes a seven hundred and thirty-four square foot A D U that was approved in April of this year. The subdivision would create two slightly undersized lots, uh, nine thousand, six hundred square foot each versus the ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five square foot minimum that is required. And facilitate the construction of a cottage court for homes organized, which is for homes organized around a common court and shared drive with private yards on the perimeter. That was in quotes from the application. Two of the new homes would be accessory dwelling units and would be located closer to the street. I will switch over to one of the documents from the application now. If I can find it, here we go. And see how to make that smaller. Okay, this, this is the, the conceptual plan that was submitted with the application. Uh, the street is down at the bottom of the plan. Um, zoom out one more time here, that might help. So, the two of the new homes would be accessory dwelling units and would be located closer to the street to best match the scale of nearby homes. The application includes a letter providing a more detailed description of the existing property, the neighborhood, and the vision of the cottage court. And it also includes a table enumerating most of the required and planned bulk measurement details for the proposal uh, for, for review. The applicant indicates that the only non-conformity to be created under this proposal would be for the small lot size, the nine thousand, six hundred square foot. Since this conceptual minor subdivision would involve one or two dwelling unit buildings and apparently will not include non-conforming floor area ratios or variance from other bulk standards, the subdivision would be under the jurisdiction of the planning board. This type of minor subdivision is specifically listed as an exemption under the M L U L, the D five clause describing the powers of the zoning board of adjustment. It is noted that if the D five variance relief is determined to be applicable by the zoning officer or board attorney, then the applicant may be required to offer positive criteria or special reasons that the proposed use is sensible in this particular case. The applicant may also be required to demonstrate that the increase in density, the undersized lots, would not have a more detrimental effect on the neighborhood than construction of improvements in a manner that is consistent with the zoning density restrictions. The applicant has indicated that a larger home in excess of five thousand square feet, and I believe they're, they're saying that proportional F A R would be applied in order to achieve that, would be permitted on the existing lot of nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six square feet under the present zoning. They offer that this cottage court style reconstruction would result in four homes, including two A D Us that exhibit a size and scale that is more harmonious with the homes on adjacent properties and more compatible with the goals and objectives of the community. This seems like a reasonable assertion, but the board may wish to consider if the small lot size and/or proximity of buildings and private outdoor spaces as conceptually presented, will present any potential negative impacts upon the neighborhood or adjacent properties. I'm gonna just scroll to this image that was included in the application. So this one is now the, showing the tax block with uh, five of the lots highlighted in red and the property in question highlighted in green. The applicant, although the applicant has shown that five of the sixteen lots in the tax block measure nine thousand, one hundred and forty-eight square feet in area, it is noted that eleven of the other lots included, including the subject property, meet or exceed the required ten thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five square foot lot size. Therefore, this review by the board should also contemplate if reasonable conditions or requirements, for example, enhanced setbacks, screening, landscape buffering, or F A R restrictions could be imposed by the board to mitigate any potential impacts or if introduction of reduced lot sizes, size lots in this location is too detrimental, regardless of potential mitigative conditions or improvements. I think that's the heart of the question that ultimately the board would need to decide if this was an application. And it didn't go on this, the second comment in the report. In addition to a review of the potential visual or privacy nuisance impacts that this conceptual development might present, the board should also contemplate the effects of the potential reconstruction upon the existing trees and stormwater runoff or drainage. The zoning table provided by the applicant does not list the existing impervious coverage for this property, nor the potential coverage that either a large, single-family home or the proposed cottage court will present. We, they're really, we don't know that comparison. It is not clear that the cottage court could be developed without a substantial loss of existing trees or if sufficient unpaid area will remain to retain and infiltrate all impervious surface run, stormwater runoff. Review of conceptual grading plan with the municipal land use engineer may be necessary to better analyze these aspects of the proposal.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I see that Mr. Cohen and Mr. Bodigheimer both have their hands up. David, did you wanna, or Nat, did you want to ask a question before Dan finishes with his report?
I, I, I had one detailed question about the, um, the use of proportional F A R on the, in, on the full-size lot prior to subdivision. That's what I understood you to say, Dan, but in my understanding, proportion, proportional F A R is only available for undersized lots. So I don't know how proportional F A R would apply to the, the entire lot.
Um, Mr. Bridger, do you want to weigh in on that?
I would just say that David is correct at this point. So you apply the twenty-five percent, it's about a five thousand square foot house, but it's not, you can't use proportional.
I see Marina has her hand up to.
Yeah, I will quickly jump in. There was no intention of using proportional F A R for the full lot. Uh, that must have been a misunderstanding.
Okay. The, the five thousand square foot number is correct, but the re- reference to proportional F A R is not. Okay.
Yeah, um, Mr. Bean, I'm gonna swear in, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear?
Absolutely, yeah.
Sure, from the testimony that you have given and will give, will be the truth?
Absolutely, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
I had just wanted Mr. Dobremilsky to please repeat the, the, the framing that he had as the nub of the question that, in his view, is the board's to decide.
Okay, um, I can do that now. So this, this was the end of the third paragraph from, from comment number one. And basically what we were saying is that the question comes down to, if, if you felt that this was, was reasonable for this particular property, for the reasons that they're asking, um, that you would need to contemplate if reasonable conditions or requirements such as enhanced setbacks, screening, landscape buffering, or F A R restrictions could be imposed by the board to mitigate any potential impact. So if you perceive that this proposal, as they're requesting it, does produce some impacts on the neighboring properties or the neighborhood, um, could you impose any conditions that would be able to mitigate that? Or is it your, your assessment that the introduction of reduced lot sizes in this location is too detrimental, regardless of the potential mitigative conditions or improvements that.
So the first, the first point is deciding whether the impacts are too great to be mitigated. And then the second point is, are the impacts, are there impacts of sufficient size that we should be thinking about mitigation?
Yes, correct. You, that, that's basically the, the nexus of what your question would be, when this.
Okay.
When and if this is an application. And I would assume at this point that they're looking for feedback on that question at some level, uh, so that they, to the degree we can, so that they understand whether they should proceed with an application. Getting back to where I was with the report, the, the next comment was going to talk about the proportional F A R as, as I read it in the, the, uh, development application. I note that I did get a copy of the um, zoning permit for the A D U today, and in that, um, one of the plans submitted by, this is sheet A one point one from that zoning permit, which is dated, um, I guess this isn't a public hearing, but we would should say it anyway, is submitted by Marina Ravina, architect. Stated three, twenty-eight, twenty-two. And it has a calculation here saying that the maximum F A R allowed is four thousand, eight hundred square feet. So whatever, if there's something different in the app, this conceptual application, that would be incorrect as, as we've now determined that the proportional F A R would not be applicable. The final is just in a, a, kind of a question, if you were to, if there, everybody was to proceed with this, how do you do it? Do you subdivide first? Uh, because this new so, lot line will go right through the middle of an existing dwelling. So would the dwelling have to be taken down before the subdivision perfected? Or could it be perfected, uh, with some type of condition that it only happens if the subdivision or, I mean, the removal of the house and the construction occurs? And I don't know that we need to. And I don't know that we need to ask that tonight, but that's just something that should be noted.
Is that a, is that a quick question to answer either Jerry or, or Derek in your view? Or is it complicated and we don't need to deal with it?
I would think this subdivision has to be perfected before you can. Start building two houses, especially since the line goes down the middle house, so, I mean, would have to be approved and that would be a condition of approval. Jerry can correct me if I'm mistaken.
The question is, does the, does the existing dwelling need to be removed before? The subdivision could be perfected? Yeah?
I would think it does, I mean.
Okay. Jerry, you're on mute.
Yeah, I, I agree with Derek.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
So I just have one other question regarding. The uh, conformity app, application other than the lot size. I seem to recall on one of our other. Applications, uh, Mr. Purcell noting that I think this is under RSIS rather than. A local ordinance, but no more than three dwellings are allowed to share a single driveway. And so I don't know who might be able to comment on that, but that might be another area for variance relief if the application were to go forward.
Yeah, I, I saw Mr. Kennedy flash a four. Maybe he has thoughts about that, uh, when we get to.
I'll yield to your engineer who I think has his hands up, actually.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Wiseman?
Sure, thank you, um, yeah, it is, it is four, um, it, uh, that's, it becomes a driveway at that point. Um, if it's more than four, then it's regulated under RSIS as a street.
Okay, good to know. Um, okay, Mr. Wiseman or Mr. Bridger, any other comments that you want to add to what missed, what Dan Dobremelski has already?
Oh, your honor.
Oh, thank you.
Your honor, your excell, your highness.
Chair, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, great. And nothing from Mr. Wiseman, I'm not, yeah, okay, um, on. So thank you, uh, Dan, that was, um, was a good overview, um. Mr. Kennedy, are you here on behalf of the applicant?
I am, Madam Chair, thank you.
So can you, um, well, say whatever introductory remarks you want to say, and then we would. Um, swear in everybody that would like to speak tonight, um, on behalf of the Iodale. Um, application, not application, concept plan.
Well, uh, thank you so much, uh, Madam Chair, um, uh, and Mr. Dobremelski for, for leading us off. I'm Ryan Kennedy from, uh, Stevenson Lee for the applicant, uh, tonight, um. I'll say applicant because we are here before the board, but, uh, there are a couple of things, I know the board knows this, but for the members of the public. Just want to be clear, we are here for concept review. The purposes of that is so that these homeowners in, in Princeton can come and get feedback before this board. Before deciding whether investing in these type of plans, um, as we kind of heard. Earlier tonight with the, the notes from the subcommittee's work on, on some of the town's land use processes, um. We're very appreciative of this opportunity and promise to be quick because you have other applications here tonight. But again, we're here, there will be no vote, um, this is, uh, not binding on anyone. We're here for feedback so that these, um, Princeton residents know whether they should invest, uh, and go forward, and if they do, uh, what type of. Changes, what type of concerns this board has, um, also wanted to note that. You know, while we call this a cottage court, at the end of the day. This is a minor subdivision with a shared driveway. There will be, as planned, two ADUs, uh, so four units, but any lot on this. Um, block, uh, would be entitled to have a, a home and an ADU on each lot, um, as we're proposed, uh. As we're proposing and trying to get feedback on, and we believe. By configuring them this way, um, it has a, a better design, better works with Princeton's. Both existing master plan and some of the ideas that are coming out of its, uh, reexamination process to. Fit that missing middle, if you look at what could be built. On the whole lot and the homeowners did and tried to sell their home and you'll, you'll hear from them in a bit. They weren't really excited about what was going to happen with their property should they sell it. Um, and if you look at their plans to try to stay here in Princeton on the property, this option really kind of excited them. Um, and that's what we're looking for feedback, um, on. So it's not four houses, um, it would be a subdivision to make the lots about the size of many on the block and you'll see. Kind of an updated shaded chart from what, uh, your planner showed, because while on the left side, those red lots which you'll see, those are all undersized and under width. The lots on the right actually are all narrower, um, than, uh, is required by code as well, so it is a, a, a block of many. Non-conforming lots, the ones in the middle like this one are, uh, conforming.
I, are you, I'm not seeing what you're saying, are you, are you?
Right, we're, we're seeing, um, uh, slide number one.
Sure, I, I mean, I wasn't really going through testimony, I think Marina put the slides up in anticipation of going through it, so if you want to. If you want to skip to just that, the slide, uh, that shows what slide two, just because we were talking about that concept will.
Are, are we supposed to be swearing in anybody or are we done with that part?
Why don't we go ahead and, and do that since we're starting to go through a presentation, I think that makes sense, are you okay with that, Mr. Kennedy?
Sure, uh, I think our architect was already sworn in, but, uh.
Correct.
Marlin, if you could, um. Un, uh, unmute yourselves and we can swear you into, uh, now as well.
So who's going to be sworn in?
Uh, Jimmy and, and, and Marlin, if you could, uh.
Oh, okay.
I see one of you.
Hello, oh, I'm trying to figure out how to, oh, my camera. Oh, there, sorry.
Ah, there we are.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
This one affirmed, yeah, and, and you, you simply swear, if you could each say your full name.
Marlin Ayadale.
And Jimmy Ayadale.
Thank you.
Okay, great, go, go right ahead, Mr. Kennedy, nobody else, uh, besides.
No, that, that's it, it's just the architect and then the, the homeowners.
So right, whenever you ready to go to the next slide, I'm happy to switch the slide.
I, I, thank you, I, I will, um, so. It is a minor site plan with variances for lot width and lot area, and if you want to go to the next slide, Marina. You could see. On the left, those are all the lots that don't conform to area or width. On the right are lots that are, just make it for area, but do not conform to width either. Uh, eighty-five feet width is required, uh, those on the left are only sixty, the right are only seventy-five. Uh, will be just a hair under seventy, uh, when, when, if a subdivision would be approved. And while if an application were to be brought, we would certainly have a lot more detailed planning testimony in proofs, but just from a, a, a general standpoint. These lots would be about the size of the ones on the right and, and bigger than the ones on the left of the block from a general, um. General perspective, um. One other thing I just want to note, you know, we're. While there are variances here, this is just a subdivision, there's not a site plan requirement for a one or two family home. But, but doing this, we really are showing all the cards, we're not just asking for this lot to be split. And then have someone come back here perhaps as of right and, and do a, um. Uh, a home and an ADU, we really want to show you what, what our idea is and get feedback on it. Um, ADUs are permitted on, on lots if this were to be subdivided, we think the common shared driveway, um. Fits well would ultimately result in less, um, uh, impact to the neighborhood, less coverage. Than would be with a traditional, regular, um, single-family home driveway scenario with multiple driveways. And then finally, while we are talking about the concept of cottage court. That is a planning concept, it is not something that is a new zoning rule, it is not a new zoning type or a new use. At the end of the day, this is a subdivision with two homes and two ADUs that would comply with Princeton rules. We just happen to be going that extra step to show you how we would design it. With a shared driveway that we think makes sense and has benefits, but I just want to, you know, be clear, I, we, we, we get excited about these new concepts that, that. Um, uh, people who are, you know, planners, people who are smarter than me, um, put forth. Uh, but at the end of the day, we're applying that to Princeton's rules and, uh, a traditional subdivision. That other than lot width and, uh, close on area would be fully conforming, um, Marina, want to go to the next slide? Um, we did pull up from the master plan, um, we're just, uh, you know, the, the Princeton has targeted areas that, uh. Are appropriate for residential development, this is sure one of them, um, we'll go to the next slide, Marina.
So th- this is the property right here.
And, uh, we, we've also been listening and participating in what the town has been saying about what, what is needed, and obviously. We're, um, not here to put on our proofs or, or tell you what you guys already know about your master plan reexam process, but we, we see this too. And, and we believe that. This type of design, that subdivision would have many benefits, including, um, expanding middle in, um. That middle, missing middle, um, scenario, both because the. Homes that would be built would ultimately be smaller than the, the size of units that could be built on a, a single lot. Um, and because of the ADUs as well, we believe those sizes blend better, uh, with the existing neighborhood scheme and design. Then, uh, uh, what ultimately would probably happen if this were just to be, uh, built with a, a conforming, single-family home. Marina? Again, uh, you know, we, we, we pulled some of your data, um. More single-family homes on, on small lots is, is something I think that, that we're, we're happy to help with, and then what the town is hearing is it gathers its data. And then again, uh, accessory dwelling units, that's, that's what we're here to, to talk about. Now with that, I think I'm going to turn over to, to Marina to, to talk about, you know, this concept and, and, and what, what we're seeing.
Right, so we just wanted to quickly, um, summarize the concept that cottage court, although it has been discussed in the press in great deal. It's not an actual zoning designation that's being proposed, we're purely proposing a subdivision, and although there are excited articles. Talking about it, um, we just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, this is much more of an inspiration. And just that everybody's on the same page, we all know where that inspiration comes from, it's one of the proposed, um. Solutions that is like, is presented in the book called Missing Middle Housing. And, um, this is how they see it, so a cottage court is actually on the lot size of this, um. Size, they're proposing five to ten units, so we're not there yet, you know, maybe when we grow up, but we're not really there yet, so. It's purely an inspiration and not a designation, um. So I will try to give a context for, um, for the property and for what we're thinking of doing. Um, so to give everybody context, I'm sure everybody has been around the neighborhood and seen that there's a lot of change happening, that. Um, older homes are being replaced, um, with new construction and inevitably the new construction is substantially larger. Than the older homes, so this is the same, um, home, uh, not too far away from this property, this is the previous home, this is the current home under construction. Um, so we are here for the concept review and, um, what's wonderful about the concept review is we could talk about options. Where normally when you bring an application, you just show what you're, you know, here's what, what it is. So we are briefly going to talk about what could be done as of right on this property. So this is the existing home and, um, to clarify, uh, what Mr. Dobremelski was saying is this home has had a, a. What would have been considered a flat in the former. Uh, township and, um, it did not quite meet the requirements of the, um. ADU, so we had to get it approved as an ADU, so the thing that was not conforming about the ADU is the fact that the front door was facing the street. So we had to file a permit, so in order for this to completely become a proper ADU, this door would have to be removed and relocated onto the site. It hasn't been done, but it has been approved. Uh, but really what can be done as of right and the discussion is what is right and what is appropriate to do at this location. Um, so here is an example of what could be done if, um. Existing homes was replaced with a substantially larger home without variances, and this is where the, um. Uh, proportional FAR question I could clarify, so as of right, one could build forty-eight, maybe forty-eight something square feet on this property. But those do not include basements and attic, so with a full finished basement and a attic meeting all the requirements, this house could be for sure five hundred. I'm sorry, five thousand square feet, close to six thousand square foot of usable space. Uh, but those would not count towards, um, FAR, so no proportional FAR would be needed, um, for this size of home of finished usable space. So we looked at what else could be done as of right, and an existing home could be replaced with, um. A basically a very large home and a very large ADU, both together, again, this would include basements and attics. No proportional FAR, it, it would be again, close to between five thousand and six thousand square foot of usable space. And for comparison, uh, this lot is about thirty percent larger, maybe twenty-nine percent larger than thirty-five, thirty-seven Oakland. That was recently redeveloped in this configuration where there is an existing home. And existing garage that was converted to an accessory dwelling unit. And that configuration, um, this is the picture of that home, so this lot is substantially larger than previous one. And that drew a lot of controversy and a lot of discussion that that house was too big for the neighborhood. So what we wanted to also bring as part of the context is. These rising. Property values here in Princeton and this, um, data has been provided by a local real estate agency, basically in nineteen ninety-eight. A median home sold in Princeton was about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars and it is over one point one million dollars as of right now. So the home prices are completely increasing, um, and we're told that that is in the large part. And especially you could see the big jump in the last year due to incredibly restricted supply of housing. Um, so what we're are here to discuss, and because it is a concept review, we have this opportunity to discuss. That path of least resistance here is to just build a very large and expensive home, and that's what a developer would do. Um, subdivisions, as you could see, are time-consuming and expensive, and the owners of this home. Decided to take a chance and invest and bring a concept review. Um, they propose a subdivision that create two lots that are very similar or very like. The other lots in the block, as you saw, they're bigger than some and basically about the same size as the ones to the right of them. New homes will be similar in size and scale to the other ones in the neighborhood. And this configuration, most importantly, will allow the homeowners, um, to stay in Princeton. So we have not designed the homes, we haven't figured out exactly what, what, exactly what this will look like. But just to give you a sense that those five to six thousand square feet, instead of being one block, would be distributed between two main homes and two ADUs. And because our idea was to put the ADUs up towards the street, that they would, um. Be much smaller scale and fit within that neighborhood character. Um, we have provided proposed plans, these by no means are final, uh, plans, you could see they're hand-drawn. But, um, this begins to sort of suggest and address that it's a proof of concept that we tried to lay out and it works with. Smaller homes that would comply with all the setbacks. Um, so the lot line would be in the center, and the reason we decided that it would be a good idea to share a driveway. Is that it would help us create less impervious coverage, um, rather than having two driveways independently. Um, we also worked really hard, this is an old survey that was done at the purchase of the home, so it doesn't show. The existing tree locations, but we sort of eyeballed and measured, um, with our. The existing tree locations, but we sort of eyeballed and measured um, with our. Best techniques that we have and showed that um, there's actually a tree right here. That we would try to keep as many trees as possible, back to the question. Of um, whether it's possible, so that would be the central driveway would kind of drive around this main tree in the center, create a very interesting. Feeling, um, and then the reason we chose to put the smaller homes up front, um, these would be the ADUs is because they maintain. That sort of single story look of the street. And then the larger homes would be in the back and they would have larger backyards, and that felt like an appropriate thing of setting the larger homes back. And they would have more privacy and more outdoor space. Um, for reference, these are uh, some ideas for um, second floors and basements. And you could see they're all different, and the reason that they're all different is because we're just trying different options and saying, you know. In theory, we could design this, for example, ADU A would be kind of an L shape and it would have no basement. And it would have an attic or ADU B here proposed, it would have. Uh, a basement but no attic, so there are different configuration just to show you proof of concept. The other interesting thing that we're exploring is um, trying to make them prefabricated and built offsite. Um, so um, on some of your plans, especially the one that Dan was sharing, we have. Modular dimensions shown, so they these in theory hopefully would be done offset fabricated. Um, so just to sort of run through. Um, what we wanted to quickly summarize is that um, we feel that this proposal agrees with the current master plan of um. Denser housing located in walkable neighborhoods, and we feel that this is a really walkable neighborhood. Because it's really close to the shopping center, you could, you know, literally go around the block and you're right at, you know. Grocery store cafes, it is walking distance to Princeton University. And it is very close to all the schools where kids could get themselves places. Um, there require, this is requires pretty minor variances that will make the property more consistent with the neighborhood. Um, we don't have the final design, so the final design of the homes is to be determined, but we expect to work with the staff and professionals to. Not require any um, side yard variances or anything like that, so we expect. To not need any relief, although we haven't designed the homes yet. Um, and we feel that these new homes will provide housing options that rank high in the visionary. Um, survey that was recently done, because these will be effectively smaller homes on s- on lot, on smaller lots. They will be ADUs which seem to be desirable. Uh, we feel that this is a better fit in the existing neighborhood versus um, character and scale. And again, it fits um, helps with the goals of the homeowners to stay. In their um, in the community where um. They're rooted and have a lot of friends and connections in in a way that um, allows them to do responsibly. So let me jump to my new slide here, so again, what we hope is. To have a discussion and to have you guys tell us what your advice is. But uh, before we do that, we were hoping that uh, Marlon and Jamie would um, give us. Um, their version of why. Um, and I think it's important to hear from them and to hear why this is important and why did they decide to take on this. Adventure and investment um, to try to do this, so um. I will then be here in case you need me to switch slides and. Show other things, but otherwise hopefully I'll find my view button somehow.
Thank you, Ms. Rubina.
Alright, Jimmy and Marlin, if you wanna quickly introduce yourselves and uh. Um, uh, explain, you know, what uh, why, why you brought us here?
Yes. Good evening and thank you for giving us the forum. To present the site development plan for our property on four, six, nine, New York Street, Princeton. We have a long history in Princeton, and as we contemplate the strategy to remain in the neighborhood. With the home appropriate for our needs going forward. It's important to us that our desire contributes to the community and is well received. As a result, you can see from the concept drawings that we are putting all our cards on the table. To be very transparent, very early in the process. It would be wonderful if we left here today. With a signal suggesting we are on the right track. And or modifications, if any. That would be better received. By why, by way of introduction, we are Jimmy and Marlin Ayadale, owners of four, six, nine, New York Street. We moved to Princeton thirteen years ago during the two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine recession. It was a traumatic and unplanned relocation. But our decision to move to Princeton proved to be perfect as a town that was welcoming. And our family, what was welcoming and our family, especially our children thrived in this community. We deliberately purchased a home with a legal flat. Now called ADU, primarily as a way to financially afford to move into the community. Princeton, even during the recession, was still in a, an expensive real estate market. Over time, we further appreciate the benefits of that decision. And how to, how the rental income from the ADU would supplement the funding of college tuition for our three children. And more recently, it is a critical part of our retirement strategy. We cannot begin to express how grateful we are that the town had the foresight to allow the ADUs. And has further improved this tremendous benefit over the last several years. All our children went through the Princeton public school system. And our youngest, Moji Sola, just started college at NGIT in Newark. After being recruited to play soccer. She was able to cap the final year in Princeton High School, we're getting to the state soccer finals last year. She is home routinely to meet friends and will be here this weekend. Her sister, Iowa, who was in university in the city, attending Blue College is also home routinely. And finally, Morale Lyle, our son, who left for college five years ago, now works in New York City. And is home in Princeton for a week long stretches, even as recently as three weeks ago. To meet up with several friends from high school. All three children see Princeton as their lifelong base, anchored by their parents. Lastly, I work for Princeton University and my husband's company, Bio Haven Pharmaceutical. Is based in Yardley, Pennsylvania, which means our professional lives is also rooted in this community. We are sharing all this as a context in terms of our gratitude and continued commitment to Princeton. It also serves as framing to what led us to this concept review. As empty new investors this year, we were faced with the dilemma. Of wanting to downsize our residence, but in a financially rational way. We listed our home earlier this year with two listing options. One listing had us moving into the ADU and selling the main house. This was our preferred approach, but would require some investment for final compliance. The second listing we placed was to sell the entire house at the guidance of our sales agents. The house has many renovations that predate our ownership. And we have found that modern buyers cannot accept the current floor plan. Primarily the fact that the master bedroom is on the second floor while all other rooms are on the first. The two offers we received were likely to realize an expanded footprint, footprint to resolve the issues. Either way, making a three thousand square foot home become a five thousand square foot home. Buyers were very interested because of the lot size, but gave limited value to the home by our calculation. Because of the renovation hurdle, the offers were substantially below our asking price and did not make financial sense for our family. This prompted us to rethink our strategy, since we really don't want to move. This concept we are here to discuss creates an option for us to remain in a smaller home in the community. And neighborhood we love and to do it in a way that makes financial sense. While getting our property ready for sale, we discovered that our lot is somewhat unique in in our block. Our lot and the lot immediately north of us, about a hundred and twenty five feet wide. While other lots near us are about sixty to seventy feet wide. While other lots are about nineteen thousand to eleven thousand square feet, our lot is over nineteen thousand square feet. We also found out that if one were to build a single family home on our property, it would be about. Five thousand square feet, not including additional space in the basement and attic. We are reviewing our concept conceptual proposal. What, when, when you are reviewing our conceptual proposal, we hope that you keep in mind. That our neighborhood is a large portion of the prop- the, in our neighborhood, a large portion of the properties. Do not meet the outdated zoning regulations, as in the, in the case in many other Princeton neighborhoods. Although two new lots will be a bit smaller and a bit narrower than required. They will be the same and even larger than many existing lots in the immediate vicinity. As noted earlier, we are very interested in the community and the continued success of Princeton. Thank you again for taking the time and we look forward to the discussion and hopefully a clear sense for what is approvable. In the spirit of our design goals.
Thanks, Marlin. Um, so uh, with that, Madam Chair, um, we're um. Uh, you know, we're here for feedback and to answer any questions and uh, would would love to hear. Um, if we're in the right direction or or what type of uh, things the the board uh. Would like to to see with a, an application like this, should it be brought in the future?
Uh, thank you very much for that presentation um, and those remarks and. I see Mister, a couple of members of the board have hands up and I just want to also say that after board members have. Uh, a chance to ask questions and make a few comments, I will invite um, members of the public who may wish to. Express their views, um, also to uh, speak, they'll have a three minute uh, time limit. Um, but I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit maybe, but I wanted to just um. Let everybody know that. Mr. Bodigheimer and then Mr. McGowan.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the first, I guess first thing I just wanted to say is, you know, from a policy and planning point of view. You know, I I I I I love the proposal and I um, I'm very sympathetic with the diagnosis of what the. Likely alternative is, uh, if, 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 if we don't, uh, you know, given the opportunity to go forward, I mean, it's. You know, you you see it all over Princeton, uh, I can imagine, very easy imagine. Uh, the very large home being built on that lot as. Uh, you know, as as feared or just anticipated or forecasted, whatever the right, whatever the right verb is there. Um, but I really do want to make sure that, that, that I understand. The application of the variance, uh, and how like, you know, wha- what standards we need to to follow. And one of the questions that I I have in particular is, what is the implication for? Our deliberation about. Whether or not to grant the variance of the existence of non-conforming lots in the vicinity. What, how does that affect the way we think about, uh, I mean, is that irrelevant? Is that, or is that something that, uh, you know, factor that we can take into our uh. I- i- into consideration? And again, the second, um. You know, the second question I have is, are we? I- i- is again to get some help with the framing of the question, when granting a variance, what is the? The handicap of this property. Uh, that is the motivate, you know, the 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 justification of the um, for the granting of the variance. That, that's, that's my question.
Jerry, would you like to speak first to the question of the under, other undersized lots and whether they? Matter in terms of the board's, uh, you know, deliberation here and then. And then maybe speak to the criteria that would need to be met in order to um, grant a variance if this comes as an application?
Certainly, um, yeah, I I I think the board certainly can take into consideration and should take into consideration. Um, the, the nature of development of lots in the area uh, in the neighborhood. And therefore, it it can, a- a- it can ensure, as I said, uh, consider the undersized lots, I think it's perfectly appropriate. And it's a proper function for the board. In terms of the standards, this would be what you you would call a C two, two variance. Which is, you have to, um. Granting the variance would have to advance some purposes of the municipal land use law. Usually the one everybody relies on is um, guide the appropriate development of um. Of land in in the, in the municipality, municipal, and you sort of talks about. Not any particular municipality, obviously, um, and that would include, um. For the, uh, for the, for the benefit of the public. Um, and then the benefits of granting the the variance outweigh the detriments. That's called the positive criteria, and then the negative criteria is there's no substantial impairment of the public good. And for the public good, that's been defined in the cases as the immediate area, the immediate neighborhood. Um, and then there could be no substantial impairment. Um, of the intended purpose of the zone plan and master plan. Um, and certainly you could take into consideration the, the, again, the size of the. And of the lots vis a vis the sizes of the lots in the immediate neighborhood. So those are basically the criteria.
And then my, so if I can just follow. Uh, just briefly, when you say to advance purposes of municipal land use law, does that, does that encompass? Ordinances that establish a policy objective of increasing, you know, housing opportunities for missing middle housings in in the. Uh, is is that what's meant?
That's, that's a good question. Um, I think you probably can take that into consideration in determining whether, um. There is any substantial detriment to the public good, uh, and here, I I think the. The board, if it so choose, could reach a conclusion that the public good uh, is advanced and take that into consideration. As well as consistency, consistency with the um, uh, with the character of the neighborhood. But I I I think the idea that you'd be getting more missing mental housing is something the board could consider, but. Um, that, that's something you shouldn't, I wouldn't give a great deal of weight to that, because we don't want to kind of slide into the area that we did. On Humbert Lane, you know, we're making basically policy decisions and legislative decisions. So it's really advancing purposes of municipal, so it would be primarily um, guidance. For the appropriate development of land and that would include population densities. And that's the main one.
Okay, thank you very much, that's very helpful.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. McGowan?
Uh, please forgive me if I'm asking some very fundamental questions here. Now, as I understand this. Um, the property will be subdivided. It would be on one piece of the property, it would be a main house and an ADU. Which would, and that would be occupied by the current owners. On the other piece of property. Um, there would be a main house and an ADU. But there would be no ownership by the um, the, the current. The current, what did I say, the current owners.
Well, I think we would have, sorry to interrupt you, Alvin, but I think we would have to make our decision. Completely independent of who owns the properties now or in the future, I mean, I. I'm sorry, Jerry.
I'm gonna have to get back in because I, 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 I really thought, and this again, it's maybe my misunderstanding of the ADO ordinance. That the owner. Had to be on, no, I know it could be subdivided. Now again, I know it could be subdivided and then they know I had to be joined, but you can actually now have an ADU. Even though. The owner doesn't owe, is not going to be on, 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 on the own part of the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and any other, was that the sub and substance of your, of your question?
That is, that is.
Okay, alright, good, thanks, that was a really good thing to clarify, so. Thank you for that. Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Quinn, then Mr. Cohen.
And actually, Alvin asked, uh, one of the.
And actually, Alvin asked, uh, one of the questions I was going to ask about that. So um, I I assume that uh, Mr. Mrs. Iadelli will continue, you know, again, we have to, we can't I'm just gonna ask the question. I think I'll get shot down if if necessary. So you will continue, your intention is to continue as owners of the two properties, should we approve uh, the subdivision here. Uh, is that correct? Or?
I intend right now is still on them, yes.
Okay, would that require any kind of an association agreement?
Um, I'll try to answer that one. Um, so if if there were to be a subdivision, um, but all units were to be, both left and right side were to be owned by the the applicant, um, they could rent out any combination of the units without having an association. If they were to want to sell less than two, like less than the full left or right, there would need to be a condominium set up on the side that they'd like to set, sell less than both the front and the back. I don't think that's their intention, um, but um, those are all the permutations of what could be done. They could own both left and right, live in one, rent the other three. Or condominiumize them and sell kind of any combination of the units or even sometimes flip which one, you know, look, move in the the larger home and then move up to the ADU at some point if uh, if that was appropriate and kind of flip ownership.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to ask a question about the, you know, I I know that it's early on and the designs that we were shown tonight will are very rough. And uh, but you know, I I really would suggest that I know that you have the roundabout there in order to kind of save a tree that is uh, in the area, but that looks very awkward to me. People are going to have to back out of uh, that long driveway or, you know, from the people who are living in the back two houses. Um, might be something for uh, for Ms. Rabina to to consider uh, there. And you have six parking spaces. Are there, uh, what are what are the parking requirements for if if this prize? If this project were to go forward?
Sure, I'll I'll if 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 I get this wrong, Derek will correct me, but currently, a single family home would require two parking spaces and the ADU's none. So I believe that would be once subdivided. Marina shaking their head, less than that?
Um, I I'm unmuted, right? So uh, if the accessory dwelling unit has two bedrooms, it's required to have one parking space. Um, and that is what we're proposing. So the the concept here would be, and you're absolutely right, it's very schematic at the moment. And we do not know exactly where the tree is. It's just measured in relationship to the house. So the idea would be that the shared driveway leads to a parking space. And then it this person would turn around and drive out forward. We do not expect people to drive out backwards. That does not seem seem safe. Um, and then the people who live in the back, they would continue driving, 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 driving around the tree because we're into tree saving. Um, and then one car is in the garage, one car in front of the garage, and then they would kind of back, turn around and exit that way. That is the plan. I can't promise because I don't have the final survey to exactly know where that tree is and whether that's possible. But um, our intent is to try to save as many trees as possible. But if you feel that that's not a good configuration and you would rather have no tree in the center, um, that's something that we would definitely would love to hear your comments on that. That's that's a good comment. Is is, am I understanding correctly that you would prefer not to have a tree?
You know, I again, I I realize that these are rough, uh, rough sketches and that, you know, you're nowhere near a final plan yet, uh, but I would just, you know, suggest that you take that into mind.
Absolutely, yeah. But I think, um, do, am I hearing correctly that the intent would be to not back out all the way backwards?
Oh, I think that would be very smart. Yes, I think that would be very smart.
That's for sure, okay.
Exactly, especially if there is a tree right in the middle there. Um, and then I also have questions, uh, another question about the ADU ordinance. Having, and this is really about the ordinance itself, is there any definition in of the ADU within the ordinance as to its location? Can the ADU be the front uh, the the front structure?
My understanding that there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents the ADU from being in front, but we would love to hear any feedback on that. There is a, as you heard, we um, had to deal with this in the existing configuration of the house right now. The accessory dwelling unit door is not allowed to face the street. So that's why we had to design the ADUs so that they do not have the front door facing the street. That is a restriction that's um, clearly stated. So the ADUs are, their doors are facing kind of in, uh, and the house doors are facing towards the street. But um, that's my understanding.
Because I, because I do like the the concept of putting the smaller buildings up front. I think that
I do too.
I think that uh, the neighbors might be very appreciative of that. Now, uh, my final question really is regarding the height of, you know, would would they, you know, again, I know it's early. I know you haven't gotten there, but would you the would the roof line be the same for all four structures? Or would the the two large, two back units be higher?
Um, at the moment, the way we are envisioning this is the accessory dwelling unit. And they they they're small enough that they're not going to be two-story. They're either going to be a basement and a first story and nothing above it, or no basement and uh, one story plus an attic. So they would be one, one and a half stories. The the homes in the back, they would be full two-story, so they will be taller. And uh, da 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 da, where's my picture? Uh, here you go. So you could see that from the street, the other ones are so far back there. But again, they will not, they'll be, you know, two stories plus an attic. So they will not be any variances required or any, their their height to setback ratios that will apply in this case. So we would um, work with the staff to make sure everything's compliant.
Sure, okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Um, thanks, Owen. Uh, Mr. Quinn and then Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate you bringing this as a concept review. I'm a big proponent of ADUs and many years ago had the privilege of attending a workshop led by Dan Perolick and having lunch with him. And it was a very interesting um, discussion. And I, there were a couple of things that are that are confusing for me and I hope to get some some clarification. Uh, if you could go to slide thirteen. Uh, Ms. Rabina, thank you. Um, so in this, in this configuration where of the main house and the ADU, um, we're hearing a lot about missing middle and about a certain price point of housing. I'm curious whether you know or anyone on your team knows what the ADU sold for in this case. And I assume it was an ownership unit and I'm assuming that that we're being presented with opportunities for ownership.
Um, I will refer to our um, homeowners because I think at the moment they were not planning to sell things.
Oh.
Hopefully, I understood that correctly. Um, as for uh, the smaller ADU that is the former garage that was expanded, it was a private sale by developer. And since I'm not the owner of the property, I don't have information on that.
So you don't know what the sale price was?
No, it was off the market sale. And the only thing I could say that um, this particular developer has quote unquote waiting list for people who are looking for smaller um, homes. This is
Okay, I I I can't
I I'm with you, I'm with you.
I I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, what is the price point for middle for middle-class housing?
Miss, I I I'm totally with you. The the scariest statistics is that our median home price is above one point one million dollars at this point.
Sure, sure. Um, so, and and thank you, thank you, Ms. Rabina. This is uh, this is more a comment uh, for Jerry, a question and a comment. So uh, we heard a lot of uh, I I don't want to call it testimony, a lot of discussion from the from the owners of the property. And hi, I can't see you right now because could we take down this slideshow, please? Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Um, uh, from our, from our neighbors uh, about this, this presentation. And a lot of it made a sort of personal case, which I, Jerry, I'm it seemed to me that there was, that this was falling under the the C two personal hardship. Um, you know, that that portion of C two or about personal hardship, specifically cases where, you know, where there's the the benefit to the owner. And I wonder what the, you know, what role that uh, because this board has considered cases where the, you know, where personal hardship and financial hardship was uh, was, we were asked for to per variances related to financial or or personal hardship. And basically, we're told that that could not be a consideration. So I I know that that this is not a formal application, but given the amount of personal uh, narrative that accompanied this. And by the way, I, you know, I I'm not questioning the intent of the owners at all. I think you're very noble and um, I personally would like to be able to ADU aside my house, if that's a word. Uh, but I'm I'm unable to. Uh, but I wonder if you could speak to the what role the the personal hardship or personal considerations would play in in an eventual uh, application?
It it cannot play. Um, you know, we've we've discussed this in the past, financial considerations are irrelevant. Any personal hardship by the owner is irrelevant also. Let me briefly go back over the criteria for what would be a C two variance, okay? Um, the first is that municipal land use law purposes would be advanced. I'm just gonna read the ones which seem most pertinent, okay? Um, guide the appropriate use or or development of lands in a manner that would promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. That's one. Another is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and then it goes on and region, right? And regions. And a third is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. Um, so those are the municipal land use law purposes which seem most relevant to this, um, should the board decide that it wants to explore that further. And then in terms of um, what you do with that, you'd have to make also make a decision that the deviation from the zoning ordinance in terms of the of the municipal land use law purposes, that that the benefits which significantly uh, would substantially outweigh any detriment. Those are what's called the positive criteria. The negative criteria, as I indicated earlier, is there could be no substantial impairment um, of the intent and purpose of the zone of the zone plan and master plan and no substantial detriment to the public good, but that's already basically covered by the positive criteria. But but that that's, those are the things you look at.
Thanks. And and again, I I I'm not doubting the the intent of the owners. I think we'd all like to stay in Princeton and um, for for certain demographics, that's becoming more difficult.
Yeah.
And and I think it to the question that Mr. O'Donnell um, and Mr. McGowan brought up, there, there really would be nothing stopping the owners from us from granting this and having four units of housing that are being built that could be sold the day after they're built. So I think we need to be clear-eyed with that. And again, I I'm not, I I want to emphasize that I'm not questioning the intent of the owners. I think what they're trying to do here is noble. But I think from the board's perspective that we need to be sort of clear-eyed about what the law states and what what could pot be a possible outcome here.
If 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 I could just add to that, um, and other than especially agreeing with everything Mr. Muller had said, uh, under the ADU ordinance, well, you know, we we certainly, you know, was asked and we answered what the the uh, intent of the applicant would be if they were to bring an application, um, as far as selling them goes. But the the AD ordinance is agnostic as to that. And I don't know that the intent, to your point, Mr. Quinn, is really relevant either way. You know, they was asked, so they answered it, but with they, uh, whether they were going to sell all four units or keep or somehow live in all four of them with family members, I don't know that um, either one differs how the ordinance, the ADU ordinance is is applied as Princeton is set up and 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 likely would not be, I I would argue, wouldn't be a a factor um, in in a C two plant uh, variance.
Sure, and you can see, Mr. Kennedy, my confusion since personal considerations and hardships were discussed at the same time. So it's, and again, that's why we're having this conversation at the concept review level. And I will stop talking now so my colleagues can get some uh, get some time in.
Thanks, Mr. Quinn, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Cohen, and then John Taylor, and then Mia Sax.
Thanks. So um, I want to um, express a little concern uh, in terms of the, well, first, I want to express enthusiasm about having the ADUs in the front yard because I do think that it's more sensitive to the neighborhood. But my concern is that there is a separate ordinance that was passed after the AD ordinance, which is an accessory structure bulk requirements ordinance. And Marina, you need to take a look at that because I think there may be a requirement that you can't put ADUs in the front yard, basically. Um, I I don't remember it super clearly. I don't know if Derek wants to turn on his camera and comment on that, but uh, I'm a little bit concerned. And then on a related note, I do think it's kind of perverse to have the front door not be visible for those units, even though I acknowledge that that's in the AD ordinance. But I think that, you know, the whole point of this ADU ordinance was to complement the existing pattern of development where there's a primary dwelling that's clearly primary with the front door that's visible and that the accessory structure does not compete with that and cause confusion. And so you're taking a very different approach to this site. I think it's a positive one. But I think that there's the possibility that it's in conflict with some of the provisions of that accessory structure ordinance. Did you want to respond, Marina, or?
I I would love to hear Derek's opinion. My understanding of the ordinance that came after is that you are allowed to be in certain front yards and backyards and encroachments and have other special things allowed and for the accessory structures. And we are fully compliant with the the normal setbacks and that we are not building in the front yard, if you know what I mean. Therefore, it's not an issue, but that's a Derek question.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I would think Marina is correct. The ordinance gives, the enhanced ordinance that we did in the summer, gives you reduced setbacks in the side and rear yards. And the way I've looked at the front yard is, the front yard setback cannot have an accessory structure in it. But I didn't interpret it that a front, you know, an accessory structure couldn't be in front of the main house in the main building envelope. But I'm happy to rediscuss it with you, David, um, offline, but I think that's the way.
Like I say, I'm enthusiastic about it in this case, but I just want to make sure that we're, you know, interpreting
Right, but
the ordinance correctly there.
We would also, oh, sorry, just to finish your previous point is we would absolutely love to have front door facing the street. And if, for example, this board said, we would be interested in And if, for example, this board said we would be interested in having the front door face the street and that would be appropriate and you would be interested in that type of design with variance, we would absolutely no problem be interested in that.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I, I hope the rest of the board agrees with me. I'd like for people to weigh in on that. Um, then the only other comment that I have, I know you haven't really done the impervious calculation yet, but obviously stormwater is something that's very important to me and to the rest of this board. And I think the neighbors, um, are going to be, if we hear public comment, are going to be super concerned about that as well. So just, uh, you know, you need to be really diligent about making sure that you've got, uh, stormwater mitigation that really protects the neighbors.
Right. So two points on that, well, maybe three, is first, the desire for a shared driveway allows us to save and not create additional impervious coverage. I did a rough calculation and again, it's very rough being hand sketches, but it does seem to comply. And then absolutely stormwater management will be required that of course will be designed. But that, that will be to collect all the stormwater properly and store it in the, at the site. But sort of a rough calculation, we would comply, but we would work really hard to make sure that we meet all the requirements.
Great. Oh, and, and one other thought, um, is just, it bothers me a little bit. I mean, with these lots being undersized, you would be, you would qualify for the FAR bonus. Um, I would prefer if you didn't need to use that because for us to give you a variance to create undersized lots and by doing so, giving you, uh, more floor area, um, feels a little bit perverse. So.
And David, I think we could, if this is approved at some point, I think we can impose a condition that does not permit that.
Right.
So, uh, we did think about that. And just to be completely clear, the, the bump that you get is so incredibly tiny that it's not a big issue. Uh, but that's something we can discuss.
Yeah. I mean, as, as, I think to Marina's point there, it really goes to show how close to conforming to lot area we are. You know, you get half of the difference and half of almost nothing is, is almost nothing. So that, that's a good point, uh, uh, Casper, but, but I, I think that that won't be a problem for us in this application, for sure.
Really good points, David. I, I, for one, strongly agree with the front door notion and also, um, uh, care a whole lot about, uh, stormwater management, innovative and onsite infiltration. Uh, Mr. Taylor and then Ms. Sax.
Yeah, two, two short comments. First and foremost, with respect to benefits and detriments, and perhaps Jerry, you might comment. Does the master plan in Princeton today have any relevance to the determination of benefits and detriments? That's worth considering in this case. That's number one. And number two, I'll be very interested in any public comments. It seems to me that how the neighbors view such a project as this is extremely important. And it's extremely important in the legal context in the sense that to the extent there are problems or issues that are unclear, um, it becomes, it, it becomes important to have a sense of the environment which could take place post and approval. I guess the final comment, and this has been made by several of you, without regard to the project specifically, this is exactly the kind of project which Princeton needs to address. These are the kinds of problems that we need to solve. And if we cannot, for all of the reasons that we're in discussion this evening, then any objectives to maintain, extend, increase the population, the balance, the social nature of Princeton, we're faced with challenges.
Yeah. And in terms of the master plan, and I'd ask, um, Justin to jump in. But I, there, there is a, a section in the master plan that deals with expanding housing opportunities, as I recall, but Justin.
Yeah, that's correct.
And there are multiple sections and we presented the map that shows that this area is proposed as a high-density area and walkability and, um, all of those sustainability items are very important.
Scale. Yep. Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Um, Ms. Sax.
Yeah, I, first I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Iodelli for coming here and sharing your very personal story. Um, that's not easy. And I, I also want to apologize for this body and my colleagues, if anything, in any way was, um, uh, insensitive or, uh, came across as casting aspersions on your motives. Um, I found your, your, uh, presentation to be credible. Um, and I think many, many of us in Princeton and many residents who are struggling with, um, some of the obstacles that you face, um, can relate, um, to your story very viscerally. So thank you both very much for, um, coming here and, and opening, um, your lives to us. Um, I know the, the MLUL is, is a cold and impersonal document. Um, and the, the planning board is quasi judicial, but land use is very personal. Um, and the decisions we are making here directly impact people's lives on a daily basis and, um, including whether they're able to remain with their families in, in, um, in the towns where they've chosen to, to make a life. Um, so one point I wanted to address is, uh, there's somehow a misperception that with ADUs, um, renting out an ADU is the only somehow, um, uh, legitimate way to access the equity in, in the property, in your property. And that, um, by selling the ADU, you're, um, a speculator or developer somehow, somehow trying to do something to, to, uh, that's, that's not quite kosher. Um, and I, um, wanted to point out that whether, that, that for some of our older residents or busy residents, uh, being, uh, a landlord or landlady or a land, a, uh, uh, trying to, um, manage rentals is very labor-intensive. There is a lot of work that goes into that, which I'm personally aware of because my mother is a senior and she has an ADU. Um, and managing that rental is a tremendous amount of work. Not everyone wants to be involved with that. It's expensive. Um, it has, it to, to maintain another unit. And an equally legitimate way for someone to access the equity in their property is to sell the ADU and to put that money in the bank and invest it. It does not make you a speculator or a greedy developer or someone who's trying to take advantage of Princetonians. It makes you the same as anyone else who is looking at your resources and what you have and trying to, um, um, make an investment and use that money for college or for, um, your, uh, retirement fund or to invest further in your property or just to stay in your home, which is the home that's not the ADU. So I understand that it seems that you've, uh, that you feel brave enough to embark on the rental path. But should you find that selling, um, the, uh, one or more of the units, um, is the path that makes sense for you, please be assured that that is an equally valid path um, in, in, uh, your struggles with trying to remain in Princeton. And I hope that the board, um, understands that and the community. Um, the other, um, point I, uh, wanted to make is that, uh, the New Jersey Supreme Court and courts across the country have, um, uh, made it clear that it's unconstitutional to, um, for planning boards to, uh, weigh in on the form of ownership, whether rental or, uh, homeowner, um, uh, in, in making their decisions. And, and, uh, David, I just wanted, we, we were recently, uh, at, uh, the League of Municipalities. And I know David, um, ran that question by a, a group of, uh, I think it was attorneys. And, um, David, I just wanted to ask you to elaborate on, on, on that.
Yes. This was a, this was a three-hour seminar. Uh, I could not have enjoyed it more. Five attorneys. Everyone agreed that it was not proper to, um, require owner occupancy or, um, common ownership of, of the primary dwelling in the ADU.
All, all good to know. Um, a, a quick question for, um, the Iodellis have, or whoever on your team. I don't mean to put you on the spot. Um, have there been meetings with neighbors to, to talk about the concept? Just, just asking out of curiosity. And if it's too personal or nosy a question, I can, I can live without it. But since we might, might be hearing from some neighbors in the next minutes, I thought I would ask.
Uh, they'll probably chime in too, but they've started the process. They haven't talked to, to everyone necessarily, but they've, they've started the process of, of, uh, explaining this to, uh, to, to the neighbors. I don't know if they've gotten to everyone yet. Uh, Jimmy, is that about right?
You know, that's fair. I mean, the neighbors that we see more frequently, um, are certainly aware.
And, um, I would also like to, um, just go back to and say that I think part of the importance of the personal story in this case is not just the proposal, but also the fact that people decided to take this on and bring a concept review and have a conversation and have a discussion. And this is not everybody's, um, brave decision, but it's also really important for people in our community to understand that people are putting all their hearts out to say, this is what we would like to do. And this is the forum where we're able to discuss that. So I think it's important to understand that's why we're telling the story, why we're here as a concept review. Because when it comes as an application, you're just showing, here's the proposal. There's no discussion. There's no options. You can't ask where the door goes. That's, that's part of this beauty of this process of the concept review and why we, um, feel so grateful that Jamar and Manlan, um, decided to go for it because it gives the opportunity to have a conversation.
Yeah. Uh, thank you for that. It is, it, it is a good opportunity and, um, and I think we all really appreciate the, the cards on the table approach. Um, uh, so I'm not seeing any other hands raised from members of the board. Um, there are four, five now, members of the public who have raised their hands. Um, first up is Claire Baxter and then Michael Bell. Um, there are a total, just so everyone knows, of twenty, twenty-two attendees or twenty-three, I guess, uh, counting um, somebody who might have been just brought over. Uh, and, um, I would remind members of the public that you have, um, uh, three minutes, um, less is more. Uh, and, um, uh, just, uh, you know, quick comments, thoughts, questions, you're welcome to ask them. And, um, there will be a countdown clock on the screen to help you, um, keep track of time.
Okay, Claire Baxter.
And, and so first, I, uh, thanks, Ms. Philip. Um, I want to ask, uh, when you brought over to unmute yourself and activate your camera. And then even though this is a, oh, this is not a hearing. So Mr. Muller, not necessary to swear people in, or since we've sworn in professionals, it seems like.
Absolutely.
Let's, let's be consistent and we'll swear in members of the public who wish to speak. So Ms. Baxter, if you could activate your camera and, um, unmute yourself, we'll swear you in. So Claire Baxter, are you there? May, she, it's possible that she might have stepped away and does not know, because her hand has been up for a while. So could you bring Mr. Michael Bell over? And then after Mr. Bell will be Paul Wahlberg and then Mary Ellen McQuade.
I'm, I'm going to swear you, uh, will both of you be testifying?
Yes, both, uh, Michael Bell and my wife, Jane McCarty.
Okay, I'll swear you both in the same time. If, if you both can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes. Yes.
So sworn, uh, please, um, state your full name, uh, and you don't have to spell your last name.
Jane McCarty.
And Michael Bell.
Okay.
Um, we are neighbors on the other side of Ewing Street, on the corner of Ewing and Kyla at 103 Kyla Road.
And, um, I wanted to say that we feel that the increased density resulting from the subdivision of this property would be a debt, have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood. The large houses at the back of the new property would overlook the backyards of the adjacent houses. If I were in a small house next to one of those houses, I'd be very unhappy with that. The plan submitted as part of this review shows the parking for house number three and, and, and home number four at the back of the property, the main houses, which are on slide 10, with two cars parked behind two other cars. So two of the cars in the garage, two others are behind them. The two cars in the garage, in the garages are blocked by the two cars behind them. I think it's unrealistic to think that those cars will be parked there since they make it impossible for the other cars in the garage to get out. These, those cars, the ones blocking the ones in the garage, are likely to be parked on Ewing Street on a regular basis. Ewing Street's only fifty feet wide. When a car is parked on Ewing Street, only one other car can get past it. Do we want to increase the density of population on a narrow street such as Ewing, which is used as a through street by many people going to and from schools, picking up their children? How much would the houses sell for? If this is supposed to be medium income homes, I think knowing how much the, whether that's objective is really being met is a consideration. We also think that we should not be making more non-compliant lots.
Oh, here.
A change of this type would be precedent for allowing the neighboring property to do the same thing. Therefore, we're not in favor of allowing this subdivision.
And, um, thank you, uh, for, for expressing those views. And, um, I would just note for the members of the public that the, um, the potential applicant, I should say, uh, the, uh, don't, w- w- will not be responding to every comment. They're taking your comments into account. Okay, so.
I understand.
Um, appreciate that. Good. Thank you.
Okay. If I could just add that, that, what I was going to say is that the tax map does not define a neighborhood. It defines one particular block. And we've heard a lot about non-compliant lots on that tax block. But the neighborhood is defined by street, by houses on the other side of the street, and there are no non-compliant lots there. So this would be creating, we should count all of the non, of the compliant lots in the tally as we think about this. Furthermore, some of the non-compliant lots were created years and years ago. And some of them are not occupied by houses but are owned by the one family, uh, with only a carport on one of the lots. So this will be a substantial increase in density of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you both. Um, Ms. Baxter?
Yes.
Um, we, we brought you over before and, um, so you can have your, your, we'll start your three minutes uh, as soon as Mr. Muller swears you in, okay?
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand.
Got it.
You swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
This one referred.
Okay. Okay, so my, one thing is I don't, why, I don't understand why they really haven't thought about, when they subdivide the lot, they actually could put one house on each lot. They kind of haven't said anything about that. And that would be actually more conforming to what the neighborhood is like than if they, you know, had, you know, they'd put one huge one, they could subdivide it and put one on each. I think putting four is an awful lot. It's an awful lot. And Ewing, Ewing, unless you have done a, a survey on the, the traffic, is a hugely busy street. I've called in six accidents on, um, Terhune and Ewing. There's a lot of accidents on that corner, very busy. And people, you know, they, because you, the way the angle of the road is, so you get a lot of people speeding down that road with cars then now parked on the side of the road, because they're going to be parking on the road. And it's a really tough road. Michael and Jane have actually already talked about that. But it's a very, it's a tough road to be on. And that would be, that would be a big detriment to it. But I think, let's see. And my house, just as for the, the the water and the rain, the draining off, my house is actually, it's the second from the corner. So it's two houses away. And the runoff, my house is lower, so it's going to land in my yard. And then right after my, my sideline, it actually goes up again. So I get all the water now from all those houses above me. So that if there's any more drain runoff from this, this action, it's going to be, I've had four feet of water in my basement. And, you know, because of these storms and stuff. So I really would appreciate if they would consider, you know, not, not doing the whole big thing with four houses. It's just too much. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baxter.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, may I briefly say that we really appreciate the neighbors and people from the community coming and giving us their opinion. And we would very much encourage people to reach out directly to us or to the homeowners with especially individual concerns, because this is not the official application. This is a preliminary discussion. And if there are changes or things that we could do, we will be definitely looking to do that. So we're, we can't exactly have a conversation right now, but please don't hesitate to reach out directly to us after the meeting. And the information is provided in the documents that were submitted.
I've already moved over. For that, I, I expect that, that you will have folks reaching out. Maybe having a neighborhood meeting is a good idea. Thanks. Thanks very much for expressing that explicit interest in the conversation.
Mary, Mary Ellen McQuade has already been moved over.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Ms. McQuade, can you activate your camera?
That's such a good question. Can I? I'm not quite sure I know how to do it from my phone, so I apologize. I feel like it's on. Okay. If you don't mind, we're just going to go without, if that's okay.
It, it is okay. We, we still need to swear you in, but because this is not a formal hearing, we will
Yeah.
We'll just make do.
Apparently, no, no objection from the applicant, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, can't see it raised, but do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so sworn or affirmed?
Okay, great. And I apologize, I'm not so savvy with Zoom on my, on my phone. But my name is Mary Ellen McQuade. I live on eighteen Kyler. That's the corner of Kyler and Jefferson. And, you know, I, I agree with my neighbor's sentiments that we have a really lively, vibrant neighborhood here. I, I do have a differing opinion, however, in that a lot of the houses that have gone for sale in our neighborhood over the past twelve years that I've lived here have ended up with the same type of house. And I say that with a lot of deference, because I live in one of those houses. So I'm actually quite excited of the Iodellis' proposal of bringing in a, a different type of structure to the neighborhood, especially when there's such a a topic in town around having the socioeconomic diversity. And I feel like we're in a bit of a vicious cycle where we want the, the more, you know, mid-range housing price, but yet every time a house is for sale, you end up with, I think Marina, you got to four, five thousand or even six thousand square foot house. That's well over that one point one. And I just think, you know, I posed that question to this board of how are we going to break that cycle? And I think it's something creative like this. And yes, perhaps there's another car or two on the road and we've got to be more mindful of speeding and things like that. But I'm just not sure how we're going to break the cycle. If we don't really look hard at how we can be more accommodating to creative plans like this. So I really encourage the board to, to be open-minded with this plan.
Thank you. Thanks for those comments.
Dale Mead has been brought over.
Okay, great. And then we will have Matt Mysko. I hope I'm not butchering that name. And then Jerry Tenenbaum and Mark Wahlberg.
Paul Wahlberg.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Not, not the movie star.
Thank you. Paul Wahlberg, sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. Mead, if you could raise your right hand.
Okay, am I on camera?
Yes, sir, you are.
I am. Thank you.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
This one referred.
Thank you. My name is Dale Mead. I live at forty-eight Oakland Street. That's just across the street from the property you've been hearing about, thirty-five Oak. ADU plus McMansion in front. And I've lived here for forty-eight years and I have a family that lives son and three grandchildren that lives on Kyler about a block and a half from the subject property of four sixty-nine Ewing Street. So I'm concerned about the impact that some of these ADUs have been having on the neighborhoods that they are in. And in particular, while they were originally brought in to help people retire in place and supplement their income by having a, a property in back. The recent rash of ADUs has caused the housing market to go the wrong way. Namely, you often end up with houses being torn down with a McMansion being built in front and an ADU in the back. And we're creating more upper, unaffordable housing at the expense of barely affordable housing. And I have a couple of comments. I'm, a question was raised about what is the price of some of these houses likely to be? And there was an ADU by Marina Rubina and Company at two thirty-four Linden Avenue, Linden Lane, I'm sorry. And about a year ago. And in that, by the way, my clock is not on my screen. So.
Just about a minute left, Mr. Mead.
Oh, my goodness. And, and the price there was for the, on a point one nine acre lot. The main house went for, I think, one point two million. And the ADU went for eight hundred thousand, hardly unaffordable housing. Hardly affordable housing. The property across the street, and I'm really astounded that Marina doesn't know the selling price of that main unit. That at thirty-five Oakland went for one point seven million dollars. The ADU in back of it is now available for you to rent. It's advertised at seventeen hundred square feet. And it is going to rent, it's renting at the moment listed as one as five thousand, seven hundred dollars per month. So if that's what you're looking at, putting in for this new development, shall we say, at four sixty-nine Ewing Street, this is not going to increase the affordable housing or middle housing market. I, I think that there are also some questions in looking at the lots that you have, or the drawings that you've sketched out. The backyard is something that you have chosen to put the undesirable parts of your properties, shall we say, maybe the big houses and the garages in your backyard. But don't forget, there's a backyard you're backing up to.
Mr. Mead.
Harrison Street, that is, that's going to be a negative for him.
Mr. Mead, I, I need to interrupt you. I, I, you're now about a minute over. So if this, I encourage you to reach out, as Ms. Rubina suggested, and have conversations directly with, with the Iodellis or their representatives and but I have to stop you there and, and move on to other folks who want to comment.
Proposed. I think it's a bad idea. That's enough.
We, we understand. We, we understand your point. Thanks.
And I would like to specifically.
Marina, let's.
Quickly say that.
Please, please.
Please reach out to me directly.
Ms. Rubina, I'm asking you not to speak so that we can get everybody's comments in and move on to our next application. And, and I appreciate that you and others are eager to meet with folks who have objections. So, okay, next up. Matt, can you unmute yourself and pronounce your last name so that I?
Sure, it's, it's Malesko.
Ah.
You could raise your right hand. Do, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
This one referred.
Thanks, everybody, and good evening. I'm, I'm Matt Malesko. I'll be brief and I'll just start off by saying I'm speaking for myself as a Princeton resident and not on behalf of any groups that I'm affiliated with. But I'd like to say I strongly support this proposal and I hope that members of the planning board will come to do so as well. I'm sure the specifics of the plan will get worked out as things progress, but I do want to emphasize that. You know, if, if, I want, I want to emphasize that this proposed development would be a very good thing for Princeton and yeah, someone who studies housing policy and thinks about it night and day, if you asked me to give you an example of the type of developments that we need more of in Princeton, I would point to this one. It's a win for building sustainably and promoting reasonable density. It's a win for adding desperately needed units to our housing stock and promoting long-term affordability in Princeton. So I hope we see more developments like this and more proposals like this. It gets two thumbs up from me. And I look forward to seeing how this progresses. So thanks, everybody, for your time. And I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Mr. Malesko. Appreciate it. Next up.
Jerry Tannenbaum.
Jerry Tannenbaum and then Paul Wahlberg.
Hi.
If you could, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
This one referred.
Um, my name is Jerry Tannenbaum. I live at four thirty Ewing Street. And I have some concerns about this proposal. First off, Ms. Rubina said, she showed the pictures of the housing currently being built on Linden Lane, which dwarfed the houses around it. And she suggested that wouldn't be the case, but then she said it would be a two-story building with an attic. Well, that's what those buildings are. They're two stories with an attic. So they do dwarf the other houses in the neighborhood, and to me, they are unsightly. I am concerned about the density and with good reason, because in our neighborhood, we now have the Avalon Bay, which just put in two hundred and twenty-five units, or proposed units at the shopping center. So we're going to have a huge increase in population in our neighborhood. So that concerns me. In addition, I agree with Mr. Mead, and I was going to make that comment, that the ADUs that have been built in our neighborhood have gone for like, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars. To me, that doesn't seem like it's solving any kind of housing issues for people, for affordability. And also renting at almost six thousand dollars, I don't think that's the idea. So those are my concerns. And parking on the street is also a concern because we do have two rush hours and that people do go fast on our streets. And also, as Ms. Baxter said, we have a lot of accidents on the corner. The streets were narrowed. Somebody thought that was a good idea to narrow the streets when they put in the sidewalks. That's caused a lot of problems in terms of traffic, but also bicycles on the sidewalk. So there's a lot of issues here. But I'll leave it at that and thank you for your time.
Mr. Wahlberg has already moved over.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do, thank you.
Yep, so sworn or affirmed?
Okay, so my name is Paul Wahlberg. I live at three nine three Walnut Lane. That's one street over from Ewing. I found out about this proposal only a few days ago through a network of people in the neighborhood that found out and posted it on listserv. That's, those are probably a lot of the people that are currently, you're currently seeing. I think the idea we're given three minutes to talk about why doing something like this is wrong is not fair, while you get an hour to the people that have a property to create and present something that looks very flashy, but in many ways ends up being in several ways misleading. I'll start with that. They only include one block. It's bordering Harrison Street, which is not a part directly of our neighborhood. The north neighborhood is composed of Ewing, Tyler, Dempsey, Walnut, Jefferson and Terhune. If you go through all of those blocks, and look, there are no uncomplimented lots. Everything is point two by vehicles larger. I live on a half acre lot. Point four nine acres. So I guess if you grant variances to everyone just with the lots, I should be allowed to do it too, including everyone else in my neighborhood. So then I did the, they suggest that their neighborhood is one block. To me, it's very, very, very misleading. And I think that needs to be noted. Second, these small, the small buildings that they show are not conforming with the way buildings are currently being built in the area. Everything's switching over to larger homes. So they will be extremely unusual. And having four tiny houses packed right next to each other with a court and a shared driveway. There are no shared driveways anywhere in our neighborhood. I walk past their house all the time. I think where they are right now, even a little bit bigger would be very, very conforming with across the street and the street over and the street north and the street south and two streets over. It would not, it would only be conforming with houses that are currently being torn down. There's house, which is also a small, on a small lot, but conforming. Next to hers, she spoke earlier, her house has been torn down and much, much larger, but very nice in case the house has been built. I definitely encourage giving someone a chance to use an ADU. It's fine, but the fundamental issue that I see here is whether you guys are going to legislate through variances. Allowing everyone in the neighborhood who wants to, who wants to get a variance to subdivide a lot with no limit on necessarily how far it should go will be allowed to do it. What you're doing is essentially saying the zoning laws don't matter anymore. That isn't what the planning board is supposed to be doing. If you want to allow these people to subdivide legally, then you should change the zone so that the allowable lot size is smaller and then they can do it legally. What you're essentially doing is saying our zoning laws don't matter. We'll settle it. And then when someone says we want a variance, we'll give it to them because we like the idea of higher density. You need to do higher density within the law. That's what happened when you guys built that huge development, which offers a lot of more affordable housing north of the, of the shopping center. That was done correctly. It was in an area where everything conforms. The houses are all very similar to each other. It was done on a grand scale. Walking in our neighborhood, tearing apart little lots by granting variances and creating more meetings like this in the future is not going to work. I'm saying this with someone who has a half acre lot that could benefit and make a huge amount of money if you do this way. That's what's going to happen to this lot, the way we try to sell sometime in the future. I personally could benefit from it. I could make a lot of money, but I just don't think it's worth it. And I'm sorry, I'll, I'll finish there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wahlberg. And I know I'll speak for the applicant when I say, you know, not the applicant, sorry, the, the, the folks with this idea that they do want to, to speak with folks about. I mean, you've made your views very clear. I'm not, I don't mean for that to sound patronizing. I'm just saying that hopefully.
I have a problem with the way the board works, using variances to, to promote, using.
Oh, I, I, I heard that loud and clear as well. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I'm not seeing any other hands raised on the part of participants, folks who want to address the board. Going once, going twice. If you have comments, now's the time to raise your hand. Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. And it being nine thirty, we're going to need to take a break. But first, I, I want to thank the Iodellis and Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Rubina. for a really interesting presentation, lot of questions and, you know, important considerations. Obviously, members of the public either really like it or have some real concerns. So I I I just had one. I I assume that if you do submit an application and come in, would you have a planner offering testimony as well? I mean, I don't mean to get ahead of ourselves here, but.
So some of the comments we heard tonight were really specifically about how the C variances work. You know, we didn't come here to, you know, to to prove the positive negatives of the of of a of a C two variance. We gave some basic background and I actually think Mr. Muller did a really nice job of kind of summarizing how that would work. Whether, I don't know that we would necessarily bring a planner. It's what I'm hearing tonight is is those are obviously the the only thing we'd really be looking at, the only non-conformity is that size variance, and that is quite important. So I I what I'm hearing is to make sure that the proofs and the story, the planning story to support a C variance is very important. Both because I could say till I'm blue in the face that, you know, each application stands on its own. But ultimately, each one is quite unique, particularly in a C two variance when you're balancing the positive and negatives of a particular project, perhaps with some restrictions posed by the board versus the negative. So I think the short answer is a message received that those those proofs will be important. We we certainly knew that. And, you know, wanted to get this this feedback ahead of investing in that.
Yeah. Okay, good. And I I do appreciate very much. I mean, this may seem like a minor thing, but the attention to if you do come back in with this minor subdivision with the shared driveway, saving as many trees as possible, both for the obvious environmental benefits, but also for the sake of buffering and you know, continuing to fit in with the neighborhood and provide that appropriate scale. Mr. Muller?
Do you want to see if any board members have any further comments?
Of course. Yeah, thank you for that. Any any final thoughts from board members about this before we let Iodellis go? Mr. Quinn?
Just thank you for bringing this forward and having this discussion. I I think it's it's good for, not only for this neighborhood, but for the town as a whole. And it it certainly has been an interesting discussion. So, thank you for that.
Yes, it has. I, okay, Jimmy, were you gonna ask something?
Yeah, no, just obviously then, thanks for your time. This is actually even for us as a as homeowners, it was actually very insightful learning experience at a minimum. The the challenge for us is obviously we're not developers, we're not investors, we're not. At the end of the day, this is our resources that we're putting into this. And the next phase to get to an application is actually quite, you know, it's obviously quite expensive and also so the challenge for us is we wanted to walk out of here with some sense of, okay, is it good idea? Is it something where the, you know, overall as a, I know you don't vote in, I don't know how best to walk away from this, knowing exactly where we stand to a certain degree. But the idea is to be able to, you know, we with the next phase, we'd like to know with some measure of uncertainty, but certainly some direction that there's support for this or if there's if or what else would we have to change to 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 make it work or we don't, we don't even mind what the answer is. We just want to know so that we can make the the right choice next. So we don't have to, we're not investing and without some insight.
A fair question. And I think that I heard from board members real interest in this concept with the understanding that that we we can't prejudge based, you know, on on a concept plan. But it, but you know, I did not hear any board members offer up, you know, a smackdown. And and I and I actually heard some some enthusiasm, especially for having placing the smaller accessory dwelling units in front if you know, on the assumption that they help to mitigate the well, that that they they present an appropriate scale along the streetscape and yeah, I I I don't. Maybe I should stop talking and see if any other board members want to weigh in. I don't want, I see Mr. Cohen's hand is up and he's usually very good at expressing himself when I start to wander in Ms. Capizoli as well. So David?
So I do want to sort of respond to two of Mr. Wahlberg's comments, which I in a in a way that I think will be helpful to you. On the on the notion that this board is sort of taking policy into our own hands and willy-nilly granting variances without consideration, I don't think that that is the case, and I especially don't think it's the case in regard to the to your application. This is really a de minimis variance to have lots that are undersized to this degree. And I think there are very strong planning benefits to what you're proposing. So I think that you know, we would be on pretty solid ground granting the variance relief that you're asking for. On the other hand, you know, he made the point that all these other little houses are being torn down right now and replaced with McMansions. And if that continues, then the little ADUs that you're proposing to create in your front yard will be the outliers in the neighborhood. And I don't, I'm not sure how to feel about that. I mean, you know, we we've been hearing from the community for the past ten years. You know, how can we slow down the tear downs? How can we keep the character of the existing neighborhood? And I think that your proposal really tries to do that. But just realize, you know, you may be in a situation ten years further down the line where these are the only little houses left on the fronting on the street.
Ms. Capizoli?
Well, I'd like to say that I think this could be setting a trend in the right direction. And I think the important thing is looking at that C variance and looking at all of the positive attributes that come with this so that you have those arguments all ready and set. And I do think possibly a planner could do that pretty eloquently, but that as one of the commenters said, you know, if we don't start get a handle on this trend of, you know, the houses getting bigger and bigger, it's it's just a self-perpetuating cycle. So I don't know, I feel like other people may be inspired to do smaller projects than not do the McMansion again and again and again. And that the C variance is the key of showing that it does promote benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Capizoli. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Sax?
I just want to echo what all of my colleagues eloquently said, and I can't say it better, but just to say that I I really agree with everything that's been said thus far and I continue to appreciate serving on this board because because I have such eloquent and wise colleagues. So thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Iodelli, does that answer your question? The board is not being completely specific about, you know, there were specific comments about front doors, about the trees, about stormwater management, really important scale. Yeah.
No, it's definitely helpful and I thank you for being candid. So we'll take your feedback and I don't know Marina and Ryan, if you have any other comments?
I'll just I'll just echo that. Thank you. You know, the the purpose of this night is an extra chance to get feedback. I know it's, we were carried from an earlier meeting, but you know, we did working with the planning office, do some some noticing. The idea is to get feedback and I feel like we we did get it and very appreciative from you tonight. And I I hope after we regroup that we'll be, you'll be seeing this again.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you again so much for your time and for the time of the members of the public. And do again reiterate, please don't hesitate to reach out to us personally. We have reached out to people who commented today and got no response prior to this meeting. So we do encourage them to talk to us so we can address the specific issues.
Okay.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. So it is nine forty-two. Let's take a break and reconvene at nine fifty. And we will do our very best to get through this this next application. Okay? Thank you. See you soon. Think. Great. Thank you, Ms. Philip. Next up, we have a hearing, BL Development Manager LLC. This is a minor site plan with variances at seven seven five Mount Lucas Road, Brandywine Living, Block Eight, excuse me, Block twenty-eight oh two, Lot Three, File Number P twenty-two twenty-two dash two four three P M.
Madam Chair, notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Dobramilsky?
And if you could raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna share my screen again and my report was dated November ninth twenty twenty-two. So what I have here is a Google Maps image, the property in question, Brandywine Living is located in the middle of the screen. As you can see, on Mount Lucas Road, Bun Drive, we're to the right, but way behind the property, Route two oh six over in this area off beyond, right across the street. I think this is Dogwood, Dogwood Hill Residential Neighborhood, right across the street. So this application requests minor site plan and variance relief approval for two to install two matching freestanding internally illuminated signs that identify the senior living housing at the site and include the phone number, website, and management name for the property. The signs will flank the entrance drive and will be oriented parallel to the road. The signs will include some metal scrolling and monogram lettering with the letter B. This is from the application. This is the two images provided with the application showing the sign that's on your screen now. One of the two proposed signs will essentially replace the existing sign. If you look at the upper image, the existing sign is shown in the inset and the proposed sign. The existing sign is illuminated from the ground by a spot lot focused spotlight focused away from the road. In addition, there are, this, the second sign is going to match and would be located on the opposite side of the entrance drive as shown here. The a third directional sign is also proposed as you scroll up, that that's, this is what that sign would look like. And that will be located as you proceed, which you look at the inset in to the entrance drive, it's the kind of the Y intersection of that entrance drive. That's where this new third directional sign will be located. It will exceed the the height restrictions, fifty-four inches is proposed, but thirty inches is permitted by code. That that sign will be set back approximately eighty-five feet from the road and will not be illuminated. The municipal engineering and zoning report offers a detailed description of the four aspects of variance relief required for the proposed signage. The application did not include the narrative that is requested for variance relief for the C variances. I've outlined them specifically what was what's exceptional about this property to warrant the relief and what's the hardship and what are conditions are peculiar to this property that the variance could be requested with and is reasonable and the minimum needed. That that and also asking that the relief would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and the relief will not impair the intent and purposes of the zone plan. So we're asking the applicant to provide that testimony. The applicant has indicated that the signs will assist residents and guests and visitors as emergency services to identify and find the property, which is a sensible and appropriate rationale for the property identification signage. However, the argument does not indicate how this property is exceptional, nor that the signs are a reasonable minimum needed to identify the property. Since the existing sign is president at present at a similar setback from the road, it might be presumed the variance relief has been previously granted for that existing sign. I did not look up the previous application to find that. I'm hoping the applicant has. The inside curvature of Mount Lucas Road in this location does present site site distance concerns, and I will quickly go to the street view. Whoops. Try to. That's not working. Well, if you look at the, you could see the, I apologize for the zooming, you can see that there's an inside curvature to Mount Lucas Road here for these signs. So that kind of creates a difficulty in seeing the sign. But then a question, well, why would you continue to have signs parallel to the road and not perpendicular to the road if if that is the the what's really causing the problem of that the perceived problem of not being able to find the location. The applicant has further suggested that there will be, they're they're proposing to interminally illuminate these signs. I'm in the comment number four. And they've provided a study showing that there'll be no slight spillage onto the street. However, having the interminally illuminated signs will still make them visible. There'll be kind of a potential for a glow, although there may not be lumens lumens that could be measured. They will be seen possibly from areas across the street. So they need to really address, is that a potential nuisance concern or not? And how could they address any potential for nuisance concerns? In comment number five, I was asking, how come they're not including the street address? If it in fact is an identification or finding wayfinding, the street address would seem to be an important thing to include, much more important than having the the corporation name, the website and or that type of information provided on the sign. And finally, regarding the directional sign, the applicant should indicate what conditions or circumstances are present that require the extended height for this sign. Seems clear that the sign will assist in wayfinding once on the property and should not really provide any significant nuisance concern due to the setback and the fact that it is not eliminated. So that hopefully that provides a good summary. If there's any questions.
I see Mr. Cohen has a question.
I'm just a little confused about the internally lit because I thought early in the summary, Dan, you mentioned that it would be ground mounted, the the lighting for the the street signs would be ground mounted and directed away from the street.
That's the existing sign. The existing sign is illuminated by a spotlight.
I see.
Proposed signs would not would be internally.
Okay.
And I think they're even, if I remember correctly, they they showed them with a white backdrop. Hold on, I got the wrong. Yeah, see, if you see the signs are proposed with a white backdrop, and that's that's where my concern was coming. The existing sign, if you look in the inset, is a dark backdrop with white letters and what they're proposing is a white box that'll be illuminated internally with dark letters. And that seems to be potential in my mind. Um, and that seems to be potential, in my mind, to present more of a nuisance concern. You can actually see in this image where my cursor is, the existing spotlight for the existing sign. They overlaid the proposed sign on that image.
Dan, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, David, were you finished?
Yes, he's saying, yes, he was.
Dan, um, do you see a planning justification for having the name of the management company and the website address and the phone number?
I didn't hear one or see one in, in, in the application and I really would be stretched to find a reason for that. I think the address would be the most important part. And you probably could make a case for a phone number, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments from our professionals, any, anything you want to bring to the board's attention before we hear from the applicant? Okay, um, on behalf of um, BL Development, is, uh, is that you, Mr. Nadell?
Hi, good evening. Yes.
Am I pronouncing your name correctly or?
Uh, you said it perfectly. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, uh, Benjamin Nate Dell. I'm an attorney with the firm Saul Ewing. Uh, the applicant this evening is BL Development Manager LLC, the owner of the Brandywine Princeton Living Center located at seven seventy-five Mount Lucas Road. It is also designated as block two eight zero two, lot three. As Mr. Dobramilsky explained, the property is located in the OR one zone and it is approximately ten acres in size. Um, as will be testified to by our witnesses this evening, the application focuses on the replacement of an existing sign as well as the installation of new signage at the property to accommodate the recent improvements that have been made to the center. We have four witnesses this evening. I anticipate that their testimony overall will be brief, that the application is only focusing on signage. I do want to clarify, there is no construction to the existing building being proposed uh, for this application. It is simply a signage application. Uh, our first witness is Kenneth Segarnik, Chief Corporate Officer at Brandywine Living. Mr. Segarnik is going to provide a brief overview of Brandywine Living and will explain Brandywine's acquisition of the site along with the recent improvements that have been made to the center since Brandywine took control of the property. We will then call Barry Jacobson from Foreman Sign Company. Mr. Jacobson designed the signs that are before you this evening and he will discuss the type of signs being proposed, uh, the materials, um, and the locations. Then we'll call Brian Conway, the applicant's landscape architect and lighting expert. Mr. Conway is from Casey and Keller and will provide an analysis of the sign lighting along with the lighting levels pertaining to the new signage being proposed. Uh, and last but not least, the applicant's professional planner Gordon Gemma uh, will testify as to the variances that are being sought by the applicant this evening. Uh, so with that, unless there are any questions.
What I'll do is I'm gonna swear all your witnesses in, in once.
Sure.
Well, if, uh,
So, uh, right, just before you do that, Mr. Mueller, I want to emphasize, Mr. Nadell, that we have a hard stop at eleven o'clock. Um, so to you and your witnesses, um, uh, please be thorough but as concise as you can because that eleven o'clock includes all board questions and discussions and conditions and comments from the public, et cetera. So, um, just uh, letting you know that.
Thank you. We will focus on that.
Okay, if the four witnesses, if you could each raise your hand. Everybody here? Mr. Jimmy, okay, you raising your hand too? Yeah, okay. And, um, who's the fourth person?
Right. On camera.
Yeah, my cat says, uh, can I start your video? Cause the host has stopped it.
Oh, either Justin or, um, or Carrie, can you make sure, Mr.? I didn't touch his uh, video. Okay, well, r- raise your hand anyway and Mr. Mueller, we'll swear you in, we'll try to deal with your, um, video.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I know.
Just want to affirm, if you could each state your full name and spell your last name.
Kenneth Segarnik, S E G A R N I C K.
Barry Jacobson, J A C O B S O N.
Brian Conway, C O N W A Y.
Gordon Gemma, G E M M A.
Okay, good. Go ahead. Go right ahead.
So, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Segarnik is the Chief Corporate Officer at Brandywine Living and I'm going to ask for Mr. Segarnik to give the board a brief overview of Brandywine and why we're here this evening.
Sure. Well, good evening. Thanks again. Of course, we're gonna do all that we can to be as efficient with the testimony and the presentation. Uh, if there's anything that we get, we leave out in the interest of being hyper efficient, you know, please, uh, uh, do, do not assume we did that on purpose. We will defer to you to ask the questions if we, if we left them unattended. Uh, thanks again for having me here. Uh, I'm the Chief Corporate Officer of Brandywine Living. I've been with Brandywine for over twenty years now. Uh, we are the largest operator of assisted living communities in the state of New Jersey. Uh, we have twenty locations in New Jersey. We have thirty-two overall. We're in seven states in the mid-Atlantic. We're headquartered in Mount Laurel, New Jersey. We've been in existence now for, um, this December, this month will be our twenty-sixth anniversary. Um, we had been, uh, we have a nearby community, uh, in Princeton, uh, not Princeton proper, but it's in, uh, it's at Princeton mailing address, but it's in South Brunswick Township on Raymond Road across from, uh, the tennis racket club there. So some of you may be familiar with that community and, um, uh, this community here had been previously operated by uh, the original developer, which, uh, for lack of a better term, it was a mom and pop, uh, organization, a small group of individual owners that opened this up over twenty-one years ago. And ran a very nice community, a lovely community in a beautiful neighborhood. Uh, and, um, even prior to the pandemic, started to run out of a little bit of gas in terms of what it would take to continue to maintain the competitive positioning of the, of the asset. The real estate itself, uh, is, is a, um, uh, i- i- is, is, is an important component to the residential care services that we're providing. Um, and, uh, it, it ranges from the obvious, you know, hospitality and, and services that we're providing, but it runs, you know, the continuum of life safety and healthcare and support services. This is a licensed assisted living community. Um, so we had been in talks with the owner for quite some time. We did acquire the building in, uh, December of twenty twenty. Uh, since then, we've invested ten million dollars into the property. Uh, we, most of those, um, investments were done in an effort to position the community to be um, uh, a, a safe, secure, hospitable, warm, elegant, Princetonian environment that will endure for the next twenty-five years and beyond. So everything from all the amenities have been redone. We upsized the apartments. There used to be a hundred units. Now there's eighty units. We made them larger uh, and more spacious on the, on the, uh, dwelling side. On the amenities, they're much more modern, uh, they're much more, uh, designed for the socialization and engagement and for the quality of care and service that Brandywine is known for providing. Essential to Brandywine's service model is the concept of safety and security. That is primarily, uh, what, uh, uh, the adult children and their parents who choose to live with Brandywine and call Brandywine home. What they're paying for is to know that we're on the wall when they can't be there. And that's, that's responsibility we take very seriously. And as it relates to the real estate, some of the things that we've done, for example, is significant investments in the mechanical systems. Uh, we added an elevator. This building previously only had one elevator for three stories. It now has two, even though we reduced the number of units. Again, we look at that as being an operational safety in addition to a hospitality amenity. Um, we resurfaced all of the exterior walkways, so there is no more tripping hazards. We, of course, added some components to make them elegant as well, including a koi pond and some, you know, and lots of pavers. But again, safety and security is foremost on our minds. Uh, new boilers, uh, upgraded generator and all that, all that kind of stuff that people don't necessarily notice when they walk into the building and look around and all the opulence and comfort and warmth. Uh, but that's what we do. We focus on that sort of thing. So when it comes to the signs, uh, here are some factors as to why we feel like these changes need to be made. Um, it is a dark street. It is not just a curvy area, but it is dark. Uh, in order, i- i- it has happened for everybody who even works for Brandywine. When we were first, uh, familiarizing ourselves with the community, um, it's easy to pass by it. It's easy to pass by it because the building is so wonderfully set back far from the front, which is wonderful in terms of having a bucolic tree line site for residential lifestyle, which our residents very much have and will enjoy. Um, but it is not safe for purposes of, um, identifying it in advance time so that you're not doing a hairpin turn into the, into the parking lot. The sign that's there is completely inadequate. What we did is we replaced in kind the, uh, wood panel that previously said Acorn Glen with Brandywine Serenator Princeton. It had always been branded, uh, as the community's name. It's not a matter of branding, Brandywine Living, the corporation. It's a matter of branding the community itself. And there are several, uh, features to why that's important. Uh, number one, it is a wayfinding device. It helps people, our adult children, our customers, our future customers, the residents themselves who drive to have easily, easy identification. Um, even though Brandywine provides, uh, as much of the transportation services, including having private ambulance service, of course, is going to be emergency response events that occur, just like there would in anyone's home. Um, and again, from an identification standpoint, a location standpoint, it's helpful to have more than just the address, but for people to know, that's a, that's a, a community where older adults reside. Um, our average age resident, uh, typically across the Brandywine communities are, is in their upper eighties. Uh, and so we need to be cognizant of that and create an environment that helps even, um, travelers and passersby sort of provide deference and respect to what operations happening nearby there. And we find that by people knowing that that's an assisted living community, there is that sort of inherent likelihood that people will, um, uh, pay that deference uh, when they're driving the area, no different than you would if you were driving past a school or if you're driving past, uh, a, a recreational, uh, facility for children. Uh, similarly, uh, you know, uh, in a, in a healthcare, residential healthcare environment, uh, name identification matters, uh, to the passersby. Um, it is, uh, the, the current lighting situation is completely inadequate. Uh, it, uh, the sign is dark at night. The internally lit sign will not create, uh, a nuisance for, uh, the residents, uh, that are in the area because as, uh, the Google Earth shot showed, um, there are no neighbors that could even see the, see the signs. The signs are on our property, um, on Mount Lucas Road and there are no residential neighbors that are anywhere near or close to abutting it. I mean, it's part of the issue is that it is so dark in that area that we want to create a soft, warm, lit entryway. Of course, it's elegant. Of course, we invest a lot of time and resources to create a sign package that is consistent with our brand standard. Um, that is important to us. We are meticulous with that. We have the same sign package located um, at all of our communities throughout all of our locations. Um, so we think that having that level of consistency, um, is helpful and also is representative of the type of quality that Brandywine puts in every aspect of its, uh, community operations. Lastly, I will say that one of the other, uh, investments that we've made into the community was to really provide enhanced security features for residents who.
Sir, I, this is all very interesting, but it's just a sign request. So I just, just, you know, um, if you could just stick with what is relevant. I mean, it's wonderful to hear about all the, the, uh, upgrades you have, but, but it is getting late. And if, if you could just focus on the, the elements that are relevant to the sign request, we, we would all be so grateful. We're actually not a very difficult board and this is not a high bar, the sign request.
I will, I'll take responsibility for that. As I wanted Ken to explain, um, what Brandywine is, but I do understand the late hour. Um, so Ken, I, I just have one follow-up question. As far as, uh, the, one of the comments in, uh, Mr. Dobramilsky's review letter was, is it possible to add, uh, the address to the sign? Um, would, would Brandywine have any objection to, to adding the address?
No.
So, in, unless there's any questions for Ken, I can, uh, go ahead and call our second witness.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Ken. Next, I'd like to call Barry Jacobson from Foreman Sign Company, uh, who was previously sworn in. Barry, could you please, uh, just give the board a brief overview of the different types of signage that is being proposed this evening?
Sure. Ken touched on all the important parts of this as far as what the drawings of the signs look like. There, what we proposed here are two identical, uh, signs that are, they're corporate brand standards flanking both sides of the entrance. Um, they're twenty-eight inches by eighty-five inches or sixteen point five square feet per sign, internally illuminated. Um, on the top is a filigree, uh, fa- fabricated filigree with, um, their brand standard B monolith. And then, um, the signs are internally illuminated with a double row of LEDs, horizontal LEDs that are, each row is equivalent to sixteen point eight watts or thirty-three point six watts total for the sign. Um, they have acrylic three-sixteens, acrylic white face, uh, on the sign with, um, black vinyl graphics.
Do you have an image you can share that you can put up on the screen? Does anyone?
Uh, Ben can probably do that, right?
Talked about adding the address, which I think makes all the sense.
Yeah, I can tell.
But I don't want to then turn in all the fonts so small that.
Right, well, what we would do in this situation, we've done in the past, we could, uh, put it on the cop, it's flagged by two, um, uh, um, masonry columns. And we could put it on one of the, one of the pillars. The, the non-impeded dress. And Ben, you want to share yours?
The, Mr. Dobramilsky, I think you just had the, um, sign rendering up. Would you mind bringing it up again? Thank you.
And Dan, Dan, can you zoom in so that we can see it better? It's just, uh, quite small. So this is showing two, two sides of one sign or two signs?
That's one, that's one side on both sides of the property.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
So, they're identical. Um, they have, they have columns next to it. We can put the address on the columns. Um, we could potentially mount something below it. Uh, typically, you put something on the column with the street number.
Okay, go.
Sorry, can I just? Interrupt for a second and ask for clarification. Both the photo of the existing sign and the rendering of the proposed sign seem to place them perpendicular to the road, but I heard testimony that they were going to be parallel to the road. Can someone clear that up for me?
They're, these are showing parallel to the road as is. That's not showing perpendicular.
The face of the sign is parallel to the road?
Yes.
I cannot see that, especially in the existing sign.
The, yeah, that's not, that sign's existing is parallel, not perpendicular. It would be, it would be, you wouldn't be, if you were looking at it from here, if it was perpendicular, you would just look at the side of it.
This, this is the driveway. You can see my cursor.
Well, it's.
So the, the road is, um, across this side, parallel.
Photographer standing on Mount Lucas Road.
I'm standing in the road taking that picture. Yes. Straight, looking straight.
For clarifying.
Superimposing of the old and new pictures makes it, uh, very confusing.
I, I don't understand how that's, uh, parallel the old sign. I mean, clearly it looks perpendicular.
I'm sta- I'm standing in the street. If someone's a street, I'm standing in the street looking straight at, at the entrance. So if I was, if I was standing there, it was perpendicular to the sign, you'd be looking at this, this side of the sign.
The curb we're seeing, Jerry, is the curb of the driveway, not the curb of the street.
I see. Okay. They're pulling in right there. That's the side, yeah, that's the drive entrance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, David.
Um, so that's pretty much what that sign is. And then you have, you want to talk about the, the monolithic, um, directional sign. You keep going down. That's as you pull into the entrance and you see where that sign is now in front of the building. That's basically a, a strictly an identification sign, uh, to identify which way to go for the main entrance for parking once you're inside the property, because you can go either left or right. And that's, that's basically what that is. It's a, it's a non-illuminated monolithic type sign made of aluminum with a vinyl graphic print on it. On a, a small aluminum base. And we have it at that height just for purposes of driving. When you're in your car, you can visibly see it well.
And I'm seeing there that it's four feet tall. Is that correct?
Yes, the sign itself is four feet. It's on a small base of five inches just to get it up off the ground and look nice. Um, but the actual sign itself is, is only four foot high.
Can you talk a little more about the, the illumination, um, and the, the brightness? It really is what I'm thinking about. I, I drive that road at night a fair amount. Um, and you're correct that the signage is, is difficult to see. My concern is. that, you know, having an illuminated sign with a block, a white background at night is just going to be just, you know, really bright. Overkill, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. I I am, you know, wanting to just get to the nub of the issue and but you said something like about thirty two watts or something like that. And so I want to understand just how bright.
Well, it's only thirty three point six watts, but I think like Ben, because I think we have a lighting testimony.
Our our next witness is our lighting expert.
Okay, all right.
All those points.
Okay, thanks.
Barry, thank you. Are there any other questions for Barry before we call our next witness?
Mr. O'Donnell has a question. Owen, you're muted.
Thank you very much. Somebody had to do each meeting. I do drive by there very often and having the signs parallel to the road. You still can't see. I mean, even if they're going to be illuminated, I mean, not only is it a dark street, but cars tend to go very fast. I was just driving up there today, as a matter of fact. And there was somebody right on my right on my tail. And I was, you know, trying to make sure that I made sure that that the that I saw where where the sign was, the existing sign. If the sign was was perpendicular to the road, I think that would be much easier for people to see that it's that the turn is coming up. Rather than having Tuesday on that. In in that case, I'm not sure that two signs would be necessary. You know, I could see one perpendicular sign. Has has any thought been given to that?
Sorry, not to interrupt. We we reviewed and it was a comment in Mr. Dobramilsky's review letter about angling the signs and we explored that possibility. And I don't want to get ahead of myself. But if it would be possible for our lighting expert to testify, I think he'll be able to answer some of these questions. So with that, I'll call our next witness, Brian Conway from Casey and Keller. Brian, you've been previously sworn in. I know you submitted a lighting plan in support of this application. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm I'm assuming we're going to want to qualify me first.
Yes, as an expert. Counsel, would you like to or shall I have the honor?
You can go ahead.
All right.
Okay, my name is Brian Conway. I'm a landscape architect, professional planner. I'm a graduate of Rutgers many years ago. I've been licensed for many years also. I've been before many boards throughout the state as a landscape architect, as a lighting expert and as a as a professional planner. I'm here as a lighting expert, essentially in the landscape architect today. I've been preparing lighting plans for our office and for most of my career for which is about, you know, thirty five odd years.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. I'm going to jump right in. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Dobramilsky for doing some of the heavy lift on the front end of things. Two things that I just would like to highlight, the north sign, which is the existing sign. The setback on that sign is one point four feet. And the sign on the other side of the driveway, which we'll call the south sign, the setback for that sign is two feet. I just wanted to get that on record, so we had that as part of our testimony. When we had originally prepared our initial submission, I did not have the specifications for the translucent panel that constitutes the sign. So when we were preparing the initial submission, what we did was we did the lighting calculations with without taking that into account any reduction in light output that the translucent sign panel would occlude. Since that time, we're working together with the folks over at Foreman Sign. They were able to provide us with the specification for the sign panel. And then we had prepared a revised exhibit, which I'd like to speak to tonight, where we had included the reductions in the light levels from the translucent sign panel. And it's going to really be the the crux of what we what we talk about here tonight. So I would like to market in as 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 an exhibit. It's lighting calculations modified per acrylate WT zero three zero GT translucency specifications. It's exhibit drawing number one dated eleven twenty three twenty two was prepared by me as part of my tenure at Casey and Keller.
And what was the date again, sir?
November twenty third.
And it's drawing number one?
And
as exhibit A one. And if you could, has that been submitted to the planning board staff?
Ben, would you like to chime in? I believe we submitted it.
Yes, this is an exhibit that we submitted earlier. It was submitted to Carrie's attention.
Yeah, we uploaded it on Monday.
Okay.
I'm going to try to just get to the real crux of the discussion. If there's any additional backup information that's required, I could certainly go back to it. But I'm going to I'm going to reference the plan that's on the bottom, which is our existing conditions with our proposed light levels from the two sign boxes superimposed over it. So there's two there's two light existing light poles that flank the entry drive. And the black numbers that are shown here show the existing light levels from those two light poles. And what we had it represent was some indication of the existing light levels so that we could then share what the additive value would be from the sign lights when they were in included in the design. So you can see with the two light poles, we're looking at the entry drive, the intersection, and then Mount Lucas Road. We have about one point one foot candle without any influence from the sign in the center and down the entry drive. On the opposite end of Mount Lucas Road, at the opposite curb line, there's currently approximately zero point three foot candles. And it tapers off as you go north and south on Mount Lucas Road to about one foot candles, you know, in the in the neighborhood of thirty to fifty feet away. So that kind of lays out the existing condition. The red lines that are shown in front of the two sign locations. What that is, it's a study of the vertical illuminance, which is something that's mentioned in the lighting ordinance in the Princeton ordinance. And what that basically essentially is would be the construction of a an imaginary wall in front of the the area to be studied. And then you would take the light levels on that imaginary wall and consider them for what's happening with light output. They're shown on the property line, which again is one point four feet off the northern sign and approximately two feet off the southern sign. And I'm going to jump right in to talk about that because I think that that's a really good example of what we need to talk about here in terms of light level. So we'll look at the upper one first, the north. So the black numbers are what what was modeled for what the existing conditions are. And again, the this is a grid. The horizontal distance is ten feet and the vertical difference is five feet. And our first measurement is taking two and a half feet off the sign off the ground, which is essentially the bottom of the sign. So if you look at the black letters, which are the existing conditions, in the middle area, we have point one foot candle and the balance of them are point five foot candles. And that's from the influence of the existing pole light that flanks the driveway. The green numbers represent the additive light from the sign panel. And if you look at the point one, we have an addition of five point two foot candles at that instance. Now bear in mind that that is approximately eighteen inches, a foot and a half, one foot, four inches, whatever the case may be, off the face of the sign. And as we go up to a height of seven point four feet, the variation is reduced to point four foot candles. And as we go up to twelve and a half feet, the the there is no variation. Similarly, if we go right to left.
Excuse me, I'm just a little confused because the numbers you're referring to, I don't see them on the the page that's that's on the screen, which is vertical illuminance study at property line.
The numbers, the black numbers are not shown? Where my cursor is?
It's that that's zero point five.
Okay, and then below it on the diagonal is a green number, zero point nine?
Oh, yeah.
I can't see that.
So the the matter of the fact is that as you get a a pretty small distance away from the sign itself, the light levels reduce dramatically in the vertical illuminance study that we've done. So if you look to the left, the the vertical illuminance differential is point one at the bottom. And at seven and a half feet, it's the same. If you look to the right of the center, there's a point four foot candle differential at the two and a half foot level. And as you go up to the seven and a half foot level, there's one tenth of a foot candle differential differential. So the the differentials from a vertical illumination perspective are quite small. I'm just going to run down to the other sign. You'll see there's a similar condition here. The light level in the center is a little bit lower because it's again, instead of being one point four feet away, it's approximately two feet away. So, you know, there there's a little bit of a further reduction and you could see how quickly the light levels drop based upon the distance. So this is a study of the vertical illuminance at the property line. I just would like to refer back to the plan. And then I think I could conclude my testimony. So what this is showing is this is showing foot candles at a ten foot grid shown at ground level. And if we were to look at the signs, the blue line was the original submission where the light levels are equal, dark blue line. The light blue line was the original submission where there was a one tenth of a foot candle variation. That's with no no factor taken in for the translucent panel. And the green line, the dash line that's on the inside, that shows the tenth of a foot candle variation with the little translucent light panel taken into account. So you could see it's about ten to twelve feet away is where the tenth of the foot candle occurs. And then if you look out a little bit further by where the light blue line is, those foot candle levels are equal. So that's roughly at the curb level. I mean, at the curb area. So there's really no additive light from those lights, from the sign lights out in the street. For reference, the
So are you saying that if you stand in the street and look at the signs at night, you can see them better? But they don't cast more light further than the existing sign that's illuminated with the little spotlight? Is that what you're saying? I just I because these charts are just.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to try. I'm going to try to speak in layman's terms. I just wanted to get through the testimony on on the record so that we have it to discuss. The the matter of the fact is that there's no additive light added to the surrounding area at the curb line that emanates from the sign. The sign, the sign panels, the reduction in the light output from the sign from the sign panels is seventy seven percent. The sign panels permit twenty three percent of the light to come through it. So the 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 light, the light that Barry had mentioned, the luminaires inside the sign, the horizontal luminaires, their lumen output is about fifty five hundred lumens before the reduction. If we take the seventy seven percent reduction, I believe we end up in the neighborhood of thirteen hundred lumens as total output from those signs. And remember that the sign panels, they reduce, the translucent panels reduce the light level, but they also diffuse it. So the what the diffusion does is it reduces the glare. And for reference, a a sixty watt light bulb, which is something that we all could relate to, the light output from a sixty watt bulb is about eight hundred foot candles. So the overall lumen lumen output from the sign is going to be probably equivalent to a sixty watt bulb and a forty watt bulb if you were to put them two together. So it's not going to have a profound impact on light levels in the area. It will provide a soft a soft backlight glow for the sign. That's not going to be glary.
And would you describe that as a cool light or a warm light or?
I believe that the light, the lights that are specified are five thousand K. So they're going to be on the cooler cooler end of the spectrum.
Can those be made warmer?
I believe they probably could be.
I I personally would much rather see a warmer. And I I could be mistaken. Some of our professionals could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we require a warmer spectrum light for signage.
Would would a three thousand K be suitable if that's available? That's that's would be typically what we would what we would specify for sight lighting.
And that is in your professional opinion, a warm?
That'd be a a a a warm light would probably be twenty seven hundred K. But then that may start to add a little bit of a yellow tinge to the sign panel. I think that the the three thousand K would be a good balance and still keep the sign panel appearing on the wider side of things. I think that the the twenty seven hundred might make the sign look dingy.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in what other folks feel about that too, but I'd be much more comfortable with the three thousand than five thousand.
Mr.
So maybe you can stop sharing your screen, whoever's doing that, and we can unless folks have specific questions about the visuals. Mr. Cohen. You're muted.
I would just like to see if we could get a little bit of testimony relating how the the brightness of the sign. I'm not concerned about the light in the environment. I'm concerned about the effect on the eyes of drivers. You know, if you get you know, a a an influx of of bright sign surface, are your pupils going to dilate? And then on a dark road like this, is the driver driver's driving going to be impaired? You know, I agree there are no neighboring residences, you know, the usual considerations of lights light spill are not big concerns here, but I think that concern about how this is going to impact drivers is the question. And I'm not sure any of the testimony we just heard speaks to that. So is there a way to address that?
Certainly. Again, the the reduction in the luminous output from those sign lights by the translucent panel and the diffusion that's caused by that, I think is going to create a soft glow that's not going to be glary. For for reference, I live in Greenbrook and there's a Brandywine facility in Wachung and another one in Greenbrook. Both of them have the same signs. And of course, because I was knew I was going to be here tonight, I drove by them to take a look to evaluate the real life condition. And one of them is on Mountain Avenue in Wachung. It's not a overly well lit road at all. And the light is bright up against the road and it was not objectionable to me or glaring to me in any way, shape or form. I also looked at the one in Greenbrook that's on Route twenty two, which is a highway, but it's on an unlit part of Route twenty two. And I felt similarly about that. So the these the calculations I've done lead me to that end and the real real world observations of it backed it up from my perspective.
Thank you.
Mr. Conway, can you respond to the question that Mr. O'Donnell asked earlier of why not one sign perpendicular to the road? And just maybe elaborate a little bit on why parallel rather than perpendicular, which seems counterintuitive.
Jacobson has his hand up, but I don't.
I can tell you why also why we did not put it perpendicular because the sign is close to the road. So if you were to put a perpendicular sign there, you're going to be blocking the sight lines when you're pulling out of the property and creating a hazard when you're turning. So if someone's making a left turn out of the property, I have I have a perpendicular sign on the left side of the property, they're not going to be able to see traffic coming around that bend when they're pulling out. Same with coming forward, same same if they're going to making a right turn. So therefore, it needed to be set back as far as we can get it. And the only way we can get, set it back as far as we can get is put two um parallel signs. With perpendicular, you're gonna have accidents and it's gonna be a, a major problem. Especially with elderly drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Mister Dell, Nadell, do you, I think you have two other folks um.
Just uh our.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, just Mister Gemma.
Mister Gemma, our planner, that's uh our last witness.
Thank you. If I may, uh, I've been to given the timeframes, uh qualifications, licensed professional planner for about thirty-five years, testified in front of hundreds of boards, qualified just by the courts of the state of New Jersey as a planner. Also, uh masters in planning, teach planning, adjunct professor, University of, uh University. Also licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to recognizing the time and trying to be honest, uncharacteristically brief. There were four variances. The first one is why is there three signs instead of one that's permitted? The second one is why is it internally illuminated? The third one is front and rear setbacks, and the fourth one is the height of the directional sign. So just for the record, those, those four variances, uh they all fit under the C test or the test of the C one or C two. There was questions about your master plan. I took a look at that. The real issue of your master plan, and I think uh your planner, whoever did it, did a great job of indexing things, makes it easier for planners to look at. But you talk about the OR zone and the OR zone in particular, there were three real concerns that you have in the OR zone. You talk about making uh e- environmental constraints and site constraints, you wanna make sure it don't impact them. It's like about potential impacts upon adjacent residential neighbors. And it's like about traffic and circulation considerations. So that's what your master plan looks at in the context of whether you should or shouldn't give variance really. Uh thank you again, uh Mister Kropinski for the aerial, that was great. I was gonna use one myself. But really it shows that aren't a lot of neighbors in the area. And also gives a context of a curve of the road. And so looking at the uh four variances real quick, the first one is the directional sign. At the, the uh, the, the height of the directional sign inside, it's eighty-four feet into the building, into, into the plan. And it really, and there is actually a small little one there right now. You just can't see it when you drive up. And the reason you really can't see it until you get there is because that the driveway is actually on a bit of an incline. So the car pitches up. And then when you get to the flat area, you can see that says visitors to the right. Now I knew because I, the signs here, I was gonna go to the left. But this actually, this new sign said, so when you're driving up, drive where you can actually say it. Drive it. So that's why it makes sense. It helps circulation. It's for side safety. You, you can't see it from the road, wouldn't have any impact. So in this case, under the C two criteria, it makes sense for circulation and safety to have the sign when we drive it up, you can see it easily and send that over the left. To go to the main entrance, you're gonna go to the right, where the visitors can park. So that makes a lot of sense for someone that doesn't know the facility. The second one you talked about is the internal illumination and um Mister Conway did a great job of explaining things I tried to catch on to. But the reality is your ordinance sets a standard. Section two ninety-eight H says, how bright should things be? And they use standards that go from uh, let me see, a half year. Uh as of right signs, eighty watts for restricted signs, a hundred and sixty watts for design signs and forty watts for as of right sign. And they said that's the standard. And then actually, in your ordinance, when we talk about signs, one of the things it says, it doesn't have any glare on the road. That's what we're trying to uh prevent. Based upon the standards that you have and the testimony of Mister Conway, I think it meets that. And that was really the concerns you have, that you really do have objectified standards in your ordinance. You can point to and say, doesn't meet it or doesn't it? If it does, then that meets the intent and purpose of your zone plan. Which specifically uses the term to prevent glare in the street or adjacent properties. And as someone pointed out, there are no adjacent properties. There's no residences there that I could say I drove by at night. And like you, I drove by at night and I almost went past the damn thing. Other than my GPS telling me it's over here to the left as you go around that curve. Then you go to the last two variances. The one is the front and rear setback. Why are we doing it at this front and rear setback? And the air, the answer is, on one side, you have the retaining wall. And to go back, you have to go actually into the retaining walls, the slight constraints on one side. Point in that direction. On the other side, you have the other wall. And that was the other question is, we can't go backwards. If you had to go perpendicular uh to the road, which is more visible. Not only would you create side problems, you're actually into the right of way. So this is probably the safest location. And that goes to the last variant of why do you need two of them? Any two of them because you have set, set it where you can see it from the road in that location. And it makes more sense. It provides traffic safety, uh given the curve of the road. And so you can see coming from one side, I could see it over there, the other way, I could see it from the other side. It makes more sense. Normally, you would try not to do that, but in this case, since there aren't neighbors nearby, since you're trying to, the glare is down. It seems to make more sense, given how dark it is in that location. I mean, last night when I drove by in the, in the, in the night, in the rain, I couldn't see it. And the only thing I could see was, thank God, I knew where the building was, because the lights from the building sort of showed, showed me what was. But if I were coming there in the dark night, when there were trees that was heavily wooded, you couldn't see uh where you're gonna try to make that turn. And you're right, I also had the joy and love of somebody in back of me trying to make it go faster. As I was trying to find the place. And so trying not to have a traffic accident with the guy in back here with the same time trying to find out what we're gonna. So for traffic, circulation and safety makes sense where the sign is and why you have two of them. Uh the illumination, I think you meet your standards. And for the site, the sign coming in, why is it high? So you could see when you come on in. As you're coming in, instead of waiting to see a small little sign, a small sign will be removed, the big sign will be put in its place. That was the five minute version of planning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. So that'll conclude the applicant's direct testimony.
Uh Mister Cohen has a question?
Uh not really a question. I wanted to start the board deliberation off.
Good.
If I may. Um and I really appreciate Mister Gemma's uh testimony because I think.
David, just. Yeah. Let's, let's open it to the public. Then I, I assume there's no members of the public who wanna speak, but we should at least formally open it to the public.
Okay.
Um, thanks, Jerry. There are three members of the public. Uh anyone who would like to speak about this application, please um virtually raise your hand. By clicking on the raise hand icon, the bottom of your screen. I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I will close the public comment. Thanks, Jerry. Go ahead, David.
Yeah, so I found the testimony regarding uh the directional sign, the size of the directional sign to be compelling. Although I didn't understand why it was bigger uh prior to his testimony. I think the rationale for two signs is good. Uh because I understand the parallel placement having to do with sight lines. And the reality is if the sign were perpendicular to the road, they would have two signs, you know, one facing each way. So this is essentially like slicing a, a, a perpendicular sign in half and placing one on either side of the driveway, one half on either side of the driveway. So I, I find that convincing. Um the setback argument I find convincing. The only thing I'm still troubled by is the internal illumination. I think that they're posing a contrast between this internally illuminated sign and the existing dark sign that's, that's eliminated from the ground is sort of the only two options. And I think you could create a sign that was not inter- internally illuminated that could be a lot more visible than the existing sign with its dark background. You know, something that had a, a lighter background to it, more contrast between the lettering and the sign background. And um I still have, you know, concerns about the way that internally, internally illuminated signs could create glare um uh for drivers uh in this dark setting. Um and I, I also think that um there is an aesthetic um foundation for, you know, why we don't allow illuminate, internally illuminated signs or, or uh restrict them and i- uh to, I think we allow them, but it's like if the letter, if the messaging is what's lit and the sign face itself is dark. Um, I'm not sure about that, but I, I, I am not inclined to be in favor of that internally illuminated uh variance. I think part of the reason they're looking to do it is that it's their corporate standard. Rather than that it's actually necessary to make the signs visible. And I would like them to find a solution that's compliant with our ordinance in that regard.
Um, thank you, David. Um, other board members? Wanna make comments or, or respond to David's? React to David's uh point? I, I think I, I tend to agree. Um, Ms. Sacks.
Yeah, I uh found Mister Gemma's testimony um impressively concise and also persuasive. Um, I uh, I think having made such a, a big um to do about the in, the illuminated sign on Nassau Street recently. Um, I uh find myself in a somewhat difficult position here. I can't say that I feel as strongly about it here as I did there. Um I uh, you know, and I don't know, um, but if David feels strongly about it. Um, you know, I, I certainly, um, if it's just for corporate branding purposes, that's not something that uh I, I would uh feel inclined to support. Um but I also am just wondering what, David, did you have an alternative solution that you could think of or, or, or suggest, offer?
Yeah, I think, I mean, basically what I am suggesting is something with a lighter background than the existing sign. Something with high contrasts between the lettering and the background. And something that's indirectly lum- illuminated by like, by separate light fixtures. They could be either gooseneck, you know, coming down from the top of the sign, or they could be ground mounted uh shining up onto the sign face. That's what I would prefer.
Are there options too where the, where it's not internally illuminated, but there's light coming from behind the letters that outline the letters? I, I'm, I, I am punching above my weight, not knowing.
We, we find that for a purpose of visibility, the best is internally illuminated, it's a soft glow. What happens is when you, on a ground mount sign like this, a sign low to the ground, you have to, you have to illuminate it from the ground. So when you're putting spotlights up on the sign, that's more obtrusive of, of light than internally illuminated sign. And then when you have the weather and elements, when it snows and rains, that light gets dirty. All of a sudden now you don't see the sign like you used to because that sign going up. Once you got snow on the ground, or once you, the leaves are on the ground and it gets dirty, you, that's, it's, it, it's completely solved, it's completely counterintuitive having a lit sign at that point, because you, you won't be able to see it. And then actually, an actual bulb of a floodlight shining up at a sign is harder on the eyes to someone driving around than a soft internal illumination that is being um opaked out by most of the, by the acrylic. And by the vinyl, and you're asking for a contrast, but it's a, it's a black vinyl on a white background. So that's about as much of a contrast as we can offer. Um, and when it's internally illuminated, it's soft, it's evenly, evenly lit. It's no different than any other sign. Industry standard in the whole township. If you drive down the shopping center, you see a shopping center sign or a sign that has all the tenants on it, on a pylon sign. They're all basically lit the same exact way.
That, not in Princeton. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna say in general, that's, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, if they were, if there was an issue with the glare, they wouldn't be it would be a problem everywhere, probably. But that's the issue with, with intern- with having it externally illuminated.
Uh other comments from um board members? Owen, I, I see your lips moving, but you're you're muted, so maybe you were not talking to us.
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, well, I mean, personally, I'm inclined to a- agree with David. Um, and I um, uh David, do you do you wanna make a motion um so that we can dispatch with this one way or the other?
Well, I mean, I could make a motion that responded, responded to some of Mister Jacobson's last comments. Which is, you know, if, if, if he thinks it's inappropriate to have ground mounted lighting. I'm not gonna argue with him on that, but there are all kinds of sign, sign mounted lighting options that are completely shielded from the eyes of, you know, anybody but a squirrel who comes up next to the sign on the ground. Um, so I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna dictate exactly what the design should be. But I wanna say that it should be uh not internally illuminated, um that the, you know, the sign should have the street address as was spoken about earlier. Uh I'm not gonna micro manage the rest of the verbiage on the sign. But I think it should not be internally eliminated. It should be, and, and uh, and they should come up with a design that will be more visible than that old sign than the existing sign, which was quite dark. Um, but it can be, it, it, it should not be a problem to come up with a design that's externally eliminated.
Yeah. Are, are you making a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I guess I would make a motion to accept, to approve the application with the condition that they redesign the um, the two I'll call them monument signs, uh although I guess even the directional sign is, is also a monument in a certain sense. But those two entry signs uh to be not internally illuminated and to include the street address.
And David, would, could, is there a way that, or, or Jerry, is there a way that we could just have it be administratively reviewed or signed off on by staff and not have to come back?
Yeah, I think definitely. I was gonna suggest that.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh I agree as well. Um is there a second?
Second.
Um.
So what we're approving are um the three um uh uh variances uh that are, we, we discussed a number of signs per lot. The setback and the height of the directional sign. We are not approving the um, the lighting of the sign internally illuminated. We're gonna have a condition that says uh it must be externally illuminated and it would be subject to staff approval. Um and the other condition would, would simply be put in, put in the dress um on the sign. Um and that would be subject to staff, I would suggest that that be subject to staff approval as well.
Yes.
And then I think there are some I think Dan and, and Derek noted that there are um they might have noted there's, there's a waiver, that there would be waivers. Reminder, checklist, uh item A five, fire protection plan. And um I think that is basically it. Um and also good that it would be um uh classified uh as a minor site plan.
Yes.
The only other comment that I think we would have is that a lighting plan also be resubmitted with this application. Um with the external lighting, we would just wanna make sure that the light trespass again with whatever lighting is selected um does meet code.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. So with that motion and second and those conditions, are we ready for a roll call vote? I think so. Um Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Mister Chow?
Yes.
Mister Cohen?
Yes.
Mister McGowan?
Yes.
Mister O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mister Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mister Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Uh we are um at ten fifty-nine. So um. So um, I, I do appreciate Mr. Daddell, your, your and your. Um, experts uh and, and Mr. Sigarnik. Uh, you're um. Staying late for this and I'm glad that we got through it and um. I know that the, not having an illuminated sign may be a disappointment, but um. But that's not what we do here, and I think you'll be happier in the long run.
Well, thank you.
That doesn't, if that doesn't sound patronizing, I.
No, it's not. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration and we will come up with something that we'll all be proud of. And we'll meet the uh, the safety standards as well. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So everyone will be um. Uh, see you next week.
Uh, Jim Purcell, Jim Purcell just put his camera on, so I didn't know how you wanted to treat this.
Yeah, Jim, uh.
You want to make the motion to adjourn?
You're, you're muted, which is probably for the best. Oh, no. Five minutes, you're saying?
He wants five minutes.
Literally five minutes, literally five minutes. This is information only.
Start the timer, Justin.
Start the timer, Justin. Literally five minutes. This is simply informational for the planning board. And um, if I may, I have no presentation. I have nothing to share on the screen. And I just want to talk to you about what we're, what we're doing. Um, we at, in Princeton have had for the last five years. We have had a floodplain management ordinance in place that um pretty much. Uh, meets the standards that were required by the New Jersey DEP and the Federal Emergency Management Agency post Sandy. Um, however, the Federal Emergency Management Agency audited the state of New Jersey recently and determined that. The ordinances that are in place across the state. Um, do not comply sufficiently with federal emergency management rules when it comes to floodplain management. And has mandated that every municipality adopt a new model code coordinated ordinance. And so we are in the process of adopting a new ordinance. Uh, that will be introduced to council in January. Um, the reason that I'm in front of you today is because there are implications to land use requirements. And we will be needing to modify the land use code. In order to refer back to the floodplain management ordinance that we will be putting into place. To reflect that. Site plans and subdivisions that are impacted by the floodplain must. Comply with the new floodplain management ordinance that we will adopt. Um, we have some fundamental disagreements with the way that the ordinance is organized. Um, in that it combines land use. Building code and enforcement actions into a single ordinance. And there is some case law in New Jersey. That says that that cannot be done. Um, hence the reason that we are, we, we are actually meeting with NJDEP next week to discuss our drafts. Changes to their model ordinance to make sure that we are not. Combining municipal land use law with enforcement actions with international um, uh, code compliance. And um, the, the building code requirements. Um, but essentially what it is, is just modifying what we already have in place. Um, and one of the things that we have the opportunity to do, and we've discussed with the Flood and Stormwater Commission. Is changing the definition of the floodplain in Princeton. And the recommendation from the Flood and Stormwater Commission is that we no longer use the one hundred year or one percent probability. But we moved to the point two percent probability, which formerly was known as the five hundred year storm. So we will be uh recommending to council that they adopt this ordinance with a. Um, point two percent probability floodplain, which is the aerial. Um, uh, the horizontal uh impact to properties. Um, currently it's the one percent hundred year flood. We're going to, we're going to recommend we go to the five hundred year flood. That is acceptable. Um, and it, it is an option that given to us by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and by NJDEP. A second change that we are recommending is that we change the local design flood elevation. That is the elevation above which. A new structure can be, must be constructed in order to stay out of the floodplain. It is currently the flood insurance, the, the, the one hundred year storm, the point one percent probability, uh. The one percent probability storm elevation, hundred year floodplain elevation. Plus one foot imposed by the state of New Jersey. We are proposing that we will add an additional foot to that. So it will be the FEMA flood elevation plus two feet in Princeton. Um, so those are the two recommendations that we are, we are allowed to make and we are planning to make. Um, um, but currently. Um, as I said, the, the whole reason for bringing this to your attention is that it does have an impact on the land use ordinance. And we will coming, be coming back to you to discuss that change to the land use ordinance. As it, it is uh in compliance with the master plan. So I think that Mr. Cohen probably has some uh input for that.
David? I just wanted to dramatize the reason that we're going from the hundred year flood to the five hundred year flood. Which is to say. In approximately the last, I think it's about the last fifteen years, we've had six or seven hundred year floods. In that shorter period of time. So the frequencies are completely off based on. Uh, current rainfall patterns and that's why we think it makes sense.
And, and we're moving away from that terminology on purpose. Yeah, it is a, it is a probability storm. It is not the, the. Um, you know, it, everybody looks at it and says, well, we've had a bunch of hundred year floods and, and that's not, that's only supposed to happen once in a hundred years. No, there's a one percent probability, you know, one in one hundred chance. The five hundred year flood, there's a two, a, a one in five hundred year cha, a, a, a one in five hundred. Percent chance, yeah, yeah, a point two percent chance.
The chances are, the chances are greater now. Those numbers have to be updated as well.
Exactly right. That was the point I was going to make. The, the, those numbers are a moving target because um. The state's going to be adopting, updated, um, and forward looking. Rainfall data and flood data or projected flood data.
Positive statement, Louise. The state's going to be adopting.
Okay.
Proposing adoption of, there are, there are forces in play that are opposed to those changes. And hence, hence the reason that we want to get ahead of it.
Yeah.
And make the changes now because there's, there is a one percent probability that the state will not prevail.
That is very optimistic. Uh, okay, it's, it's eleven oh eight.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, thanks very much, Jim. I really do appreciate that. Um, David?
I would move to adjourn at this point.
I second.
Thank you both.
And I will, I will point out, it's eleven oh eight and I only spent five minutes, Mr. Cohen.
You did exactly what you said.
Good night, all. Good night.
Tomorrow morning at the Flood and Stormwater Commission.
Stormwater Commission tomorrow morning. Good night.
Good night.